Well, good afternoon and welcome to the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. Before we begin, thank you, before we begin, I just want to do a couple of quick reminders, a couple of quick housekeeping items. Number one, if you are interested in addressing the commission and you are not an applicant, please fill out one of these forms so that you're signed up to speak. We will only be calling on members of the public who have signed up to speak to address the commission. Each person will be given five minutes to address the commission. We do ask that if you're here with a group, that you consider appointing someone to speak on behalf of all of the concerns for the group, because we do reserve the right to limit any repetitious comments. So I can assure you that once you've brought up the concerns that are shared by you and your neighbors, we've heard you. We don't have to hear it repeatedly for us to have a full understanding of that concern. Please take this moment to silence any cell phones. And of course, we just ask that the golden rule is followed, that we respect each other and that we respect this commission and the process. With that being said, we're ready to move forward with the next item on our agenda, which is to receive the minutes from the July 13, 2023 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move to receive the minutes of the July 13 Planning Commission meeting.
Commissioner Claire moves, we receive the minutes of the July 13, 2023 meeting. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. We're now in line for continuance requests and we'll begin with uncontested requests.
Item 22, case PC 10893, defer to August 10. Item 23, SPUD 1509, defer to August 10. Item 24, case CE 1105, defer to August 24. Item 25, case PC 10879, defer to August 24. Item 26, case PC 10891, defer to August 24. Item 27, case PUD 1949, defer to August 24. Item 28, PUD 1950, defer to August 24. Item 29, SPUD 1492, defer to October 26. And item 30, case PUD 1960, has been withdrawn.
Thank you. Was there anyone here who wanted to be heard on any of those items? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the continuance requests, uncontested continuance requests as read.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve of the uncontested continuance requests as read. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. I'm sure we can get it fixed to say Commissioner Claire made the motion for the record. It's all good. There are, it appears to be no new continuance requests, or are there any? There's one, okay.
One new request, item 20, case SPUD 1540, request to continue indefinitely.
Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on that item? Seeing none.
I move to approve the new continuance request as read.
Commissioner Claire moves to grant the new continuance request as read. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. And the motion passes. We're now in line for the consent docket.
Mr. Chairman, before we, before we move there, I want to just be really clear. There were so many people who wrote letters and had expressed an interest in being here today for item number 20, SPUD 1540, application to rezone 4330 North Francis Avenue. I just want to be really sure that there's not anybody else here who's still waiting and thinking that's going to be heard today. That's all.
It's important, and I understand that there may be some ongoing conversations, and I'm certain you will be in touch with the neighborhood as well as those developments continue.
Absolutely.
So, that's great. We're in line for the consent docket.
Item 1 is case CE 1106, application by Okira BT Development to close and vacate a portion of a 10-foot-wide utility easement located north of Harrison Avenue and west of Styles Circle. Item 2, case C 7572, final plat of Magnolia Harbor Phase 2, located south of Northwest 23rd Street and west of Overholster Drive. And item 3, case C 7575, final plat of Red Rose Creek, located south of West Reno Avenue and west of South Czech Hall Road.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on any of those items? That's items 1, 2, and 3. Seeing none, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the consent docket as read.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve the consent docket as read. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for items requiring separate vote, and we'll begin with item 4.
This is case C 7564, preliminary plat of Cambria, located south of Southwest 44th Street and west of South Sarah Road, a variance to section 5.3.1.1.5 of the subdivision regulations.
This is a preliminary plat, it's got 178 single-family lots, one commercial lot. The plat does conform to a PUD that you all approved a few months ago. The conceptual, or the preliminary plat is basically mimics the master development plan that was a part of that PUD, with the exception of there's about 20 less lots on this preliminary plat than what we showed in the PUD. We had to kind of pull that western line, there's a significant drain there, we had to pull it a little bit further back to the east, and that cost us a few lots. So, other than that, it's almost a duplicate of the PUD. I think we have 8 TEs that we're in agreement with. TE number 3 is the variance for the lack of a street stub to the west, but that was a TE on the PUD, if you recall, that was discussed. That TE was stricken because of the nature of that stream and drainage way to the west. So, that variance just kind of is for that purpose. So with that, we'd ask for approval on the variance in the preliminary plat.
Remind me again about the street stub to the west, the, what the issue is there?
There's a significant drainage way on the west boundary of this preliminary plat. So, it's got core issues, it's significant drainage way, and because of that was the reason that you all agreed to strike the TE on the PUD and not require the street stub to the west. So this particular plat has two access points, 40, or 1 to 44th, 1 to Sarah. The remaining tract to the west is a different owner, but they still have over 2,000 feet affronted, so there's still ample access. But that's the reason that we're requesting a variance is because of that drainage way.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is in Ward 3. Commissioner Meek, would you like to begin our discussion?
I've looked into this and don't see any issues with it, and I would make a motion to move to approve with the TEs that are listed, unless anyone has any comments.
We have no one signed up to speak as well.
I do have one question.
Please.
Is there a reason why the, the entrance off Sarah Road can't be aligned with the neighborhood to the east?
To answer your ques, it is. I think, I'll double-check that, but I think that plat, well, I know because we're actually doing it as well, that plat to the east is not currently built, and that entrance has been moved in that project as well. So they will connect.
They will align?
Well, align, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Any other questions from commissioners? If not, Commissioner Meek has moved to approve of, let's vote on the variance first, you're right. Commissioner Meek, would you like to make that motion to approve the variance to the Meek has moved, and let me make sure I can read that into the record, that we grant the variance to section 5.3.1.1.5 of the subdivision regulations. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Commissioner Meek, on the motion to approve?
Yes, I make a motion to approve with the 8 TEs.
Commissioner Meek moves to approve of C 7564, including the technical evaluations. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Newman. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now in line for item 5.
Item 5 is SP 576, application for a special permit to operate use unit 8300.33 drinking establishments located at 808 Northwest 6th Street.
Thank you.
Hello, Holly Hunt, Sam Gresham Architects at 400 Northwest 23rd Street. We completely agree with the staff report, and we're just seeking a special permit for a drinking establishment here in the downtown Design Overlay District. While I, I don't think there's been any negative feedback on this, I was reached out to by a citizen, so I just thought I would bring up the things that he and I talked about that alleviated his concerns. The operating hours of this nightclub will be Sunday through Thursday, 4:00 p.m. till midnight, with only staying open 4:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. on Friday and Saturday nights. The nightclub owner has also expressed the intent that he has done some additional sound transmission reduction items, so he'll, he'll install soundproofing heavy drapes along the north, storefront windows, that's basically the only area that there's an opening in these walls, as well as an additional four inches of polyiso rigid insulation on the roof, just again, as an additional measure to reduce any kind of sound transmission to the neighbors. But we appreciate the staff's recommendation for approval and appreciate any comments that you may have.
Thank you. This is in Ward 6. Commissioner Govine.
So, I've reviewed the case, it's downtown, staff recommends approval. I don't have any concerns or questions of my own, but I certainly open it up to others if there are any.
Other questions from commissioners?
I'm curious about this, I'm sorry, maybe it's answered in the staff report and I just didn't take it out, but how does something like this that, that is aligned with residential, but it's across the street and sort of offset, how do, how do our, our requirements for separation kick in to that situation?
Are you asking me?
No, I'm sorry, I'm asking staff.
I actually noticed that as well. There are some residences, they are adjacent, I would say, to the, to the property, and I noticed that as well, that it says to the north we have parking, but there are some apartments, just so you know, that citizen lived in that area, and once we discussed those items that I just brought up, he, he felt no, he was like, "That addresses my concerns," and he appreciated the response. So, again, if anyone had felt like there would be an issue from that area, they have been notified, and I'm sure that they'd be here today if they were concerned. This is a more vibrant area, I think that's part of the intent of the Design Overlay District is to encourage this urban dynamicism, and, and that's what we're seeing here.
So there's no outdoor seating or activity?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's existing, and it'll be for egress-only purposes, no seating whatsoever.
Okay.
As far as those physical, I do have another question, and that's about as, for staff. As far as those, I appreciate the applicant's willingness to, to make those physical changes to the building to mitigate the issues with sound. I just wondered our ability as this commission to mandate any of those changes that she's making. I mean, it's, I appreciate the commitment, but, I mean, without...
I will state also that the existing walls are 12-inch-thick masonry, so triple roll of brick, and all three sides being mostly solid, so that reaches like a four-hour firewall rating. So as far as sound transmission coefficients, we're in the very, very high, much more than any requirement for sound transmission that exists. So, the, the things I mentioned, they were just above and beyond what we're already creating as far as a building envelope, that will reduce sound transmission to neighboring properties.
Which is great, and I, and very much appreciate it. I just wanted to understand our ability to create, to mandate that. Do we have, through the special permitting process, do we have the ability to require, to require that of her?
Sarah Welch, Planning Department, I would say that while you can recommend conditions to special permits, I think you're getting more into building code at that point, and you're, this application's really focused on is the use appropriate for that location.
Gotcha.
Now, wait a minute, wait a minute, you're, you're talking about building, you, you think that if we require thicker walls or whatever that are going to be like sound mitigation, that that's beyond our purview?
I, I would just state that the plans have already been approved at the state, or at the Building Department in Oklahoma City. We're just awaiting approval for the special permit to allow for the use and the use unit classification. That's what requires the special permit, so just allowing the use. But the plans do meet all building co-re requirements as far as, you know, the, the rating of those walls. So we're currently already in compliance. These are just additional measures that my client wanted to take to ensure that he has good relationships with his neighbors.
And my question is, you're, you're saying that's beyond our purview to include in the special permit?
Well, Commissioner Powers, I, I think, nor, I guess normally it's more kind of site-related, but the special permit, and I don't have the language in front of me in trying to pull it up, but the special permit language does allow us to, you know, the building's certainly is in the commission, or the purview of the commission. And if, if the commission feels like compatibility requires more sound attenuation, I think, you know, that the commission can do that. Now, having said that, I want to look at the language in the code, because if it specifies, if it's more specific than that, but, I mean, typically, I mean, the planning commission does have...
It's on page 2 of the staff report, they're set out.
The actual code language.
And my, I'm not, by the way, talking about, require anything more of them than she's already indicated they're willing to do. I'm just saying, can we require what they're willing to do to be included as a condition of special permit? That's all.
That's it. Because I just always take these opportunities to say, this is a learning moment, I think this is appropriate, I, I'm gonna vote yes. But I, but I just wondered about our, I always want to know what, what's the full scope of our ability. Go ahead, Commissioner Meek.
Were those improvements on the plans that are currently at the permit department?
No, this occurred upon the request from the citizen about these issues, and I reached out to my client, and he's, he volunteered this information. He's already consulted with a contractor. Like I said, we're all ready to, to begin just as soon as you guys approve the use. So, all, all of these items have, have been laid out, and yes, they will be achieved in the final, final construction.
I think that this warrants further review on our part to understand, because even looking at this regulation on page 2 of the staff report, I mean, it, it talks about requiring the operation to occur in an enclosed building, but it doesn't, it says similar measures designed to protect the public interest. So, okay, so if we said we wanted to have these curtains, or we wanted her to put the extra, you know, requirement, the foam on top of the roof, could we do that? And to me, the plain reading of this doesn't answer my question, but...
Right. I think, I think that that might be a little bit going too far. I mean, I think it would be something that was reasonable, that's, that would be specifically related to, you know, the location, design, and operation, the thickness of the walls and things like that, I don't know. I mean, if she's willing to agree to that, then, you know, we can make that a condition if she's agreeing to that, but I'm just saying, you know, normally it would be more towards, not the operational, but more of the location, design, and that type of thing. Limitation on intensity of lights or hours of operation or similar measures designed to protect public interest seems to me would include sound mitigation and that sort of thing, so, I mean, all I'm suggesting, this is being offered to us as information to persuade us to approve this project, and, and so I, this special permit, so I think it needs to be part of the request. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
I will note that in that same bit of text in the staff report, it also mentions a distance of 100 feet, which we are more than, we're more than 300 feet from any residents, so just want to make that distinction. And that's only for outdoor seating, which is not proposed in this project whatsoever.
Right, right. Which was my previous question.
Right.
The other thing I was taking into account, but in looking at the case, is just, it's, it's less than 3,000 square feet of a building, so it's a fairly, it's not a super club with major traffic in and out, it's, it's a fairly small establishment, which, in my view, limits the potential for excessive, excessive sound.
Correct.
I'd like to think.
So I think the question would be, Commissioner Powers, is what, what language we would want to go ahead and put in as a condition of, of approval?
Well, whatever they've, whatever they've submitted, I think is...
Is sufficient?
And I'm not saying it's going to change my vote on this one way or the other. I just think it's a good idea, when people come to us and they do things that they are presenting to us as a reason why we should approve whatever it is they're asking for, it needs to be part of the request.
Yeah. And so maybe we, we can add it as a TE requiring the, and maybe you could just read those things for us one more time for the record, I guess, just the...
So we're doing additional four-inch polyiso rigid insulation at the roof, so this is underneath the deck, or, I'm sorry, just over the roof deck, and it'll be continuous to the parapet walls, as well as soundproofing curtains at the north facade where we have storefront openings. No, there's no other openings on, on the rest of the building beside fire doors, which are insulated.
What do you think, Doc?
I, I mean, I think that those are good, good moves. I also note that on your plan, that you show a vestibule at the door, so, which is also would mitigate sound.
Further sound reduction. Yes. And that, those walls will be insulated as well, with R11 sound baths.
Unless, if there's no further questions, I'll, I'll go ahead and move to recommend approval to council of SP 576 with an additional TE that reads, added four-inch polyiso to be provided at roof, as well as soundproofing curtains on the north facade to mitigate sound.
Transmission.
Excellent.
Shall be provided. Did I get that right?
Perfect. Commissioner Govine has moved to approve of the special permit, subject to the technical evaluations, as read into the record. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes.
Thank you, commissioners.
We're in line for item 6.
This is SPUD 1544, application to rezone 1021 Straka Terrace from C3 and SPUD 1544.
Good afternoon, Mark Zitsan with Johnson &amp; Associates, address is One East Sheridan Avenue. Before you use a case for variety care, they're proposing a new building, they're already in the area, but this building is going to service additional overflow office and some fleet vehicle maintenance facilities. And so, currently, the property is zoned to allow for a hotel and other commercial uses, so we think that the downzoning here is appropriate. Staff had noted two TEs, we agree with them with one modification to TE2 based on a conversation we had with staff. Just want to make sure we don't have an issue when we get to building permit. It said if loading docks or bays are proposed, they shall not face south or west. We just want to change that to read if raised, loading docks or bays are proposed. The way the building's designed is it's going to be a garage door where a car can pull through the building and out the other side. So, I think staff's concern was having vehicles backing up and beeping as if this was, you know, a significant truck loading bay, and that, that was not the intent. So, in addition to those two TEs, based on conversations with some planning commissioners, we wanted to add a few additional TEs. So TE3 would be to strike the following use units, dwelling units and mixed uses, greenhouses, hoop houses, lodging and accommodations bed and breakfast, and lodging and accommodations commercial lodging. We will lower the maximum building height to be 30 feet. We will state that there will be a maximum number of two buildings permitted on the site, and the final TE6 would be that we would change the architectural language to strike treated metal buildings and replace it with architectural pre-finished panels. I have these TEs, I'll happily provide them to staff, so they have it in writing.
That'd be great.
And with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is in Ward 5. Commissioner Newman, would you like to begin our discussion?
Yes, we've had several discussions, he's addressed my concerns. I don't have any further concerns.
I think your mic's on now.
Said it was on. We've had several different discussions on this, and he's addressed my concerns. We, I actually sent him a list of the modifications I would like today, and as read out, those are correct, so I don't have any further objections.
Any other, we have no one signed up to speak. Are there any questions, concerns from commissioners? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval with the conditions of the modifications that TE is read out and the additional TEs.
Commissioner Newman moves to recommend approval of SPUD 1544, subject to the technical evaluations, and additional technical evaluations as read into the record. We just need, if you press the move button, there we go. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you. We're in line for item 7.
Item 7 is SPUD 1545, application to rezone 1715 Northwest 2nd Street from R2.
Good afternoon, my name's Charles Allen with Allen Engineering, 1601 Southwest 89th Street. This is a, four lots that measure 100 foot wide by 150 foot deep, 15,000 square foot. We're rezoning it today to allow for a second structure to be built on the property. It's a three-story structure, has a six-car garage on, on the ground floor. This is a family, and the owners are here, Anna and her husband Manuel are here to answer any questions. This will allow them to operate their family business out of this property also, and with the six-car garage, they can store their equipment inside. I think there's some elevations in the floor plan in there. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you. This is in Ward 6. Commissioner Govine.
Sure. And if I recall, we saw this case fairly recently, and it was one of the ones where we, we asked you to come back with a spud. Is that right? Was it?
I don't think so.
No? We haven't seen this before?
I don't think we've seen this one.
Okay. I've spoken with the applicant, and it was some time ago, so...
Right.
I haven't spoken with the applicant recently, that's why I was, but yes, I have reviewed this with them. The uses are limited to single-family residential and administrative and professional office, which I think is, is good, and I don't have any specific concerns or, or issues with the application. Staff recommended approval. Are there questions from others or anyone else here to speak on this?
No, we have no one signed up to speak, commissioners? Questions, thoughts?
I just had one question, and it was about the, the rear setback at zero.
There's a, there's a vacated alley, there's a 20-foot vacated alley, so basically we're 10 feet from the center of that alley.
Were there, is there an existing utility easement or anything behind there?
There is sanitary sewer back there.
In the alley, but not on the property?
Right. I just wanted to clarify, there's some discussion of whether the property line goes to the center of the alley, or if it stops at, at the easement. So, to clarify that, we're asking for a zero setback, but it will be 10 feet from the center line of the easement.
Any concerns from utilities about that? Other thoughts, commissioners? I know Dustin will let us know if there's an issue. Seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion, unless Dustin, you have something to add about that.
No, we're fine with that.
Thank you. I'll move to recommend approval of SPUD 1545. Commissioner Govine moves to recommend approval of SPUD 1545 to city council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Newman. Please cast your votes.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little late. It shows on your, on your Exhibit B that the alley's been vacated.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
It shows on your Exhibit B that the alley has been vacated.
It is vacated.
So, when you're saying there's some concern about where the property line is, when, when things are vacated, it reverts to the original, you know, property that theoretically granted the alley to start with. So, when you say zero setback, you're not talking about building out to the center line of what used to be the alley?
No. That's why I'm trying to clarify, is as far as... No. That's why I'm trying to clarify, as far as transfer of ownership of the easement by ordinance isn't actually a transfer of ownership.
I was basing my acceptance on it specifically notes in the report 10 feet from center line of vacated 20-foot alley.
Of vacated.
So that felt like it's clear enough to me.
Okay.
Well, the motion has been approved and has passed, so good luck with your project.
Thank you.
We're in line for item eight.
Item eight is PUD 1961, application to rezone 14700 Mezzaluna Avenue from PUD 1577.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Mark Grubbs, civil engineer, is also here, as well as the developer. What we're seeking in this PUD is really just relief from one provision in the PUD. The current PUD allows for a single-family through four-family, and that's all we're asking for. Four-family has a lot width of 100 feet, and we're asking for it to be 60. The reason being, the way that we've oriented our buildings is different than what I think the code contemplated. The code contemplates four stacked together, so that's why you need the 100 feet. As you can see here, we're stacking ours kind of vertically, where each one will have access on independent streets. So what we're asking for is 60 feet. That's the only change we're asking for in the PUD. In terms of the TEs, we agree to two, and we don't agree to one. One deals with private drives. It is important to note, in staff's narrative, it does tell us that the existing PUD contemplates private drives for access. So I think this is where you'd expect to see private drives in a gated, multifamily-type neighborhood. That's what is allowed expressly today. The developers' pro forma and everything is based upon the ability to do that. And so we're simply asking for relief from the 100-foot requirement because of the orientation of our buildings.
Thank you. This is in Ward eight. Commissioner Noble?
Thanks. In reviewing the case and then with the discussion on the private drive compared to a private street, I'd just like to ask staff to come up and explain the TE and the reason for it.
Barry Lodge, Public Works. So as we discussed in our pre-meeting, the basis of the comment goes to the subdivision regulations that state that the private, that all lots must take access off of a public or private street built to city standards, except for a small number of lots. And we've seen, excuse me, we've seen a number of these come through that where we'll have 50 or 60 or 70 lots that I think goes past what the intent of the regulations are. And so that's why we've made the comment that at some point, we need to come to the agreement on what that is going to be. Again, I'll throw this out here as we discussed in the pre-meeting. Planning Commission sees fit to delete that TE. We're not going to have any real objection on that. I think this is just something that we need to get into the record for future purposes and future developments that come in of this type.
Thank you, Barry.
And a couple of other things, Barry. The idea that there's two dead ends in the neighborhood that just dead end, that have no turnaround. Because it's a private drive, that could be allowed, but if it was a private street, it would have to have a turnaround.
Right. If we put that in as a private street that was going to meet city standards, then we would have to have cul-de-sacs at those turnarounds, and even at the 90-degree turns on the street. So there would be some major changes that would be required as a private driveway, then we would not enforce those turnarounds.
And then there'd also be, in private drive or private street, 40-foot easements, I think is the minimum, or 50?
The private street with requiring a 26-foot wide curb-to-curb street would require 50 feet for the street right of way or easement.
And a private driveway only requires 24?
Right. They've got the private driveways set just at essentially the back of curb of their driveway is what they've got for the access easement.
Okay. I understand that on this PUD, I believe, when it was originally approved, this was a while back, I think. I'm not certain.
2015.
15, even before I was on the Commission. I continue to have strong opposition to private drives. I think that in a situation where you're talking about home ownership, I think that people, it doesn't provide people with notice that they're going to be responsible for those roads as a neighborhood. That does not apply to this particular situation, so I'm in full support, but I just want to be clear as, you know, about my opposition personally, and how I intend to just try to do everything I can to stop these private drives from being built in Oklahoma City. But in this instance, I support it because of that circumstance. Other questions, comments from Commissioners? I think we're ready for a motion.
Looking at the private drive layout in the hard 90-degree corners, and has your applicant looked at the ability to get fire apparatus through this addition, or do on 10-degree days in the foot of snow, do we have to pull cots and ambulances from the street?
Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Sierra Road. These drives still meet fire code. The TEs actually meet the fire code for the turnaround of the trucks, and then the corners, they'll be able to make that turn as well.
I don't have the ability to read this zoomed in where I can see it. Do you know what the radiuses are on these 90s?
They're standard 30-foot.
Okay.
That would be on a public street.
That was my question. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments, questions from Commissioners?
One other comment or question about the fence that's around it. Do you know what that's going to be?
Mark, do you know about the joel fencing material?
The requirement for fencing material from that on the backyard where it butts any office to the north would be a required site proof screening there.
So this is going to be up to the individual owners. This is going to be for sale, right?
The developers build all of these as well.
Okay. So just your typical site proof fence?
Typical site proof fence, correct.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments from Commissioners? If not, I think we're ready for a motion.
And we didn't need to do a variance for the addresses? We did that already?
On the plat, we just needed to delete the TE, and then we'll do the variance on the plat.
With that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recommend of PUD 1961 with TE number two.
The motion is to recommend approval of PUD 1961 to City Council, and we are, we're only, we're eliminating TE, we're keeping both TEs, right?
Deletion of TE1.
Deleting TE1, excuse me. Deleting TE1, retaining TE2. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Gauvain. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks. We're in line for item nine.
Item nine is the associated plat, C7574, preliminary plat of Quell North, located east of North May Avenue and south of Northwest 150th Street, and a variance to Section 5.4.2. Point E. Point V of the subdivision regulations.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is the plat associated with the PUD you just heard. We agree with all the TEs, and we do request the variance on TE number three.
Commissioner Noble?
Okay, so looking at the plat, or preliminary plat, it looks fine to me and matches the PUD that we just discussed. First, I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance to Section 5.4.2. Point E. Point V of the subdivision regulations.
Commissioner Noble moves to approve of the variance to Section 5.4.2. Point E. Point V of the subdivision regulations. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Commissioner Noble?
And with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve C7574.
Commissioner Noble moves to approve C7574. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Gauvain. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you. We're in line for item 10.
Item 10 is PUD 1770-SPO3, application for a specific plan pursuant to the approval of PUD 1770, located at 8300 North Broadway Extension.
Good afternoon. Mark Zitzan with Johnson &amp; Associates. Address is One East Sheridan Avenue. This is an exciting project out of development called The Half. If you're familiar, Chicken and Pickle, Flix Brew House, there's a new apartment complex underway. The development has really been leaning toward entertainment-type options, and so before you today is a specific plan for Andretti Indoor Karting and Games. It's a multi-level go-kart facility with arcades, bars, food, and food options. This is going to be just immediately south of Flix, portion of the development. So staff reviewed this. They found everything to be in conformance, with exception of the signage. We are going to be seeking a variance for the signage. There's no EMD signs, but if you could flip a few more images down, one of the pieces of this building is a large A that will face the highway. You can see it there. It's a bit of an architectural element where there's swooping piece, kind of goes above the roof line. That brings our total square footage proposed above what code would allow. So we do plan to seek a variance to allow for that. That A accounts for just under 2,000 square feet of our signage. Otherwise, we would fall under the allowable signage within the PUD. So with that, we'd ask for your approval, but we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is in my ward. I am strongly in support. I think it's an outstanding area with really great entertainment options. Glad to, of course, see this in Ward seven. So I am in support of this proposal. Any questions, comments from Commissioners? Any questions, comments from Commissioners? Seeing none, I'm in support, but I cannot make the motion.
I'm happy to make a motion. I'll just note for the record that specific plan find the proposed development consistent with the master development statement and the master development plan for PUD 1770, with the exception of the proposed attached signs. So with that noted, I'll move to recommend approval, or excuse me, approve PUD 1770, specific plan of three.
Commissioner Clare moves to approve of PUD 1770, specific plan 03. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Gauvain. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
We are in line for item 11.
Item 11 is KC 7569, final plat of Northwest Second Tiny Homes, located west of Northwestern Avenue and north of West Main Street.
Good afternoon. Caitlin Turner, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant who's also here with me. You may recognize this. The preliminary plat was before you as well as this a couple of weeks ago. We continued this to allow for revisions to be made and eliminate some of those TEs. You'll see on the staff report that those have been significantly reduced. The three remaining, we all agreed to. Just to recap, this is for a single-family tiny home development. It will be fenced in, kind of like a pocket community. We did create this exhibit here along with the final plat, so you can kind of see some of the walkways here for how pedestrians will be getting to their dwelling units. Kind of helps illustrate the layout of the walkways and easements. It conforms with the governing SPOD, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Thank you. This is in Ward six. Commissioner Gauvain, would you like to begin our discussion?
Sure. So, yeah, so we appreciate the exhibit, and that helps clarify how people get to and from their units. I don't have any concerns. I'm supportive of this type of development, particularly in this area of town. I did have a question, and I think I answered it for myself, but I'll say it anyway, and you can just confirm. There's a maximum building size of 1,000 square feet.
Correct.
Correct. And then the lot size varies from 1,900 to 2,000 square feet?
Correct.
Okay. Which makes sense. I'm just saying that because the actual tiny homes don't occupy the full square of the extents that they're shown on their exhibit, which...
Right, that's correct.
But in any case, I'm very supportive of it, so I'll open it up. Further discussion?
Just one point of clarification is that the pedestrian easement is four foot wide?
Yes, that's correct.
So the tiny home would be built in the middle of the lot? I mean, what, are there setbacks or...
Yeah, there are setbacks that are within this SPOD, which I have here, again, that we're conforming with. So five-yard front, or five-foot, excuse me, front yard setback, also five feet on the sides, and 10 feet on the rear.
Ms. Turner, we may have discussed this before, and if so, I apologize, but on your exhibit, your site plan, you show a proposed alley on the very south of the little four or three lots on Track Three. What does that mean, proposed alley?
It's already there, so it's just, I guess, illustrated as such on the exhibit.
Okay, thank you.
I generally, and I appreciate the enhanced exhibit. This does help a lot.
Okay.
So I appreciate the effort on that. I think I'm going to vote yes, but I just generally have concerns, and I know that there are condos which would have a very similar concept to something like this. So that alleviates some of my concern. But I'm always worried when you sell people a piece of land, and you're not clear about where they're going to be able to park, you're not clear about what they own. And I think that these situations like this create exactly that scenario, and that always causes me concern, because I think that homeowners should have, homeowners have expectations, regardless of whether they are always reasonable. That's up for debate, but they do. And so when you don't, when it's not clear where people are supposed to park, where the lot, where the easements are, or what they own, it just creates confusion that I think is not good. At the same time, I know we're a cool, growing city, and we need diverse housing types, and this is one of those options, so I'm in support of that. So that's all I have to say, I guess. Commissioner Meek?
I have a question. The TE number two, Caitlin, maybe you could explain what common area needs to be included in the fire access easements? I don't understand what that is speaking to.
So I think that is just asking us to stipulate also the common areas, which are in the, along Second Street for each of the little development areas. That is going to be space where if fire access is needed, then they have an easement to accommodate and kind of take over that area to deal with whatever situation may arise. So just more space in the event that their services are needed.
And I think the walkways that also would allow emergency services to understand their walkways to get, I think that helped a lot also.
Yes.
Any other questions, Commissioners? If not, I think we're looking at a motion. Commissioner Gauvain?
I move approval of C7569.
Commissioner Gauvain moves approval of C7569. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're in line for item 12.
Item 12 is PUD 1958, application to rezone 7612, Southwest 74th Street from AA.
Good afternoon. Caitlin Turner again, 522 Call Core Drive. So this application is going to be for an outdoor automotive storage lot. We do anticipate it being an intermittent and passive use. We did have a neighborhood meeting previously to discuss some of the concerns. Since that neighborhood meeting, we made some revisions to the master Since that neighborhood meeting, we made some revisions to the master design statement that we sent out to the neighbors as well as to city staff, and I would like to read some of those in briefly. I will also say that staff does recommend approval subject to three TEs. We do agree to the first two, but we will be modifying number three to make it more clear and restrictive. So the first one of the changes is regarding TE3, so rather than what the proposed language is in the staff report, we would propose water facilities are not currently available at this location. Water will be extended and provided from public mains. So we will be extending that public main on 74th. The next revision is with section 9.4 to include, as the last sentence, "A metal opaque sliding gate shall be permitted to gain access to the property." And that is just to disallow for a see-through metal gate there, just another shielding effort. Section 9.8, of course, access shall be taken from Southwest 74th Street. The minimum spacing between driveways is required to be 150 feet. There shall be a minimum of 60 feet of pavement from the right-of-way. So rather than just paving the approach, we will extend that up 60 feet. It will then be asphalt millings until you get to the, that opaque metal sliding gate, and then the remainder of the lot will be asphalt millings as well, which brings me to the next provision, 9.9, to include the parking lot shall consist of asphalt millings. Lastly, section 9.14, we are including that there shall be a 100-foot setback from Southwest 74th Street to the automatic gate. So currently, where the property sits, it's a little over 200 feet from the nearest residence, which is to the west. It is sandwiched between two other parcels, and so now we're just bringing that back further, not only to allow for those heavier, bigger trucks to come in and get completely off of Southwest 74th to get up to the gate, but also to mitigate that close proximity from any residential. This site is a bit unique, or this area is a bit unique. There is some I-2 zoning to the northeast that you can see there. There's also I-2 along Council, and then the heavy industrial on the other side of Council Road. There's also Highway 152. It's about a mile to the west. And then, of course, the John Kilpatrick Turnpike was recently extended, and that merges with Highway 152 to the north. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Before we get to Commissioner Meek, I, my understanding is you had a community meeting, correct?
We did have a neighborhood meeting, yes.
Can you tell me about the nature of the concerns of neighbors, and can you address exactly how you're going, because we have a couple of them signed up to speak?
Okay.
So if you could just address what you heard and address how you are, or you're dealing with what you heard as far as their concerns?
So one of the concerns was what exactly is going to be on this lot specifically. We do have limiting language in the TE for the specific use unit that limits to an outdoor parking lot for semi-trucks, trailers, and RVs. We also, there was a question, they, there was a letter that was sent in with questions on those, so I'll kind of address some of those as well. There will be no structures developed on this property whatsoever, no bathrooms or anything like that. I know traffic was a concern, which is why we implemented that 100-foot setback to just make sure that those bigger vehicles can get completely off of the right-of-way before they go punch their code into the gate and are able to get onto the lot. But traffic was a big concern that was discussed. Also, lighting, of course, this is pretty far away from any residential, but there'll be, any lights on the property or on the lot will be shielded down so as to not, or not to bleed over onto other lots, which that is an ordinance requirement already, so that's not something that's specifically included in the PUD. Some other concerns were just regarding what types of vehicles will be parked here, hours of operation, which we do not currently have any hours of operation in place, and the event that people are coming in late at night, they can actually drop their trucks off whenever they're rolling into town, essentially. And then, other than limiting language, that was kind of how we tried to specify what was going to be permitted on the lot.
That's helpful, and I understand the location and, you know, how that impacts the analysis of what the appropriateness of the use. Could you talk to us about the screening requirement?
Yes, so the property will be fenced. It's going to be chain-link fencing with a privacy screen, and then, of course, that metal opaque fence in the front. So the entirety of the property will be fenced and screened. There's going to be a landscape buffer on the western side, the 300 feet to the north. That's where the nearest residence is, that west side, so there will be trees along there. We'll also be planting trees along Southwest 74th Street.
And just on uses, I think, I don't know if you specifically mentioned it, but salvage is not an allowed use in this spud, correct?
Yes, that is correct. That use unit that we went with, so we're keeping an AA base, the agricultural base zoning. The 8300.21 specifically excludes salvage and junkyards. And then this will be like a rental-type facility where people are renting a space, and so it's not like a free-for-all, anyone can just go park there, dump things off.
But it's monitored?
Right, yes.
Commissioner Meek?
You guys have already addressed several of the items that I was going to speak to. I do, I do have a concern about somebody comes in late at, you know, late at night or 5:00 PM and pulls up to the gate and they haven't paid their rent or they're not allowed entry. If this was a neighborhood with the gate, it would have a turnaround area with large trucks. That's a little bit more difficult to do, but it's not impossible. What, how are you guys addressing people being turned around? Will there be a main number to call?
Yeah, so there's going to be a number to call. The gate will have an option to open it manually, so worst-case scenario, they would actually be able to get that gate open and then turn around, or if the gate was malfunctioning for any reason, there would be a means so that they wouldn't have to reverse onto 74th Street.
Right, and/or battery backup, power loss situations. We picked up the water main extension, which in the PUD, it talks about staff recommending it being extended and looped, tied in. Millings have been kind of an issue for me. We, I spoke with several protesters regarding this and many issues that have arisen over this, but one of the things that I was wanting to see if the applicant would be willing to accept what they call ribbons and/or curbs, especially, so the first six, you have 100-foot setback to a gate, 60-foot, we're talking about doing concrete, 40-foot to millings. Well, the millings are just going to migrate with weather, with rain, with water flow. My request is to see if the applicant would be willing to put a curb or a ribbon of concrete to maintain the milling layout.
Yep, we could agree to that.
I would like to add that as a TE if approved. Sidewalks, I haven't and don't know, I know that in this area, staff recommendations, and, give me one second, I'll find it. In the 9.12, it says sidewalks shall be installed for all new construction and/or at the time of a residential use. It's kind of a gray area because there's not a structure, so I want to ask my other commissioners your idea on whether this number nine, under the staff report, if you guys believe this should be added.
And we anticipate on doing sidewalks, so if we need to revise 9.12 a little bit to just, so that's clear?
That would definitely clear that up for me.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll revise that to five-foot sidewalk shall be constructed on the arterial street period?
Right.
And just leave it at that?
Cool. Yes, ma'am. That's all I have for now.
Ms. Turner, I, explain to me what this business is about, how Commissioner Pennington and I have had some brief acquaintance with another facility, nothing like this. Who needs this facility? What is it for?
I think it's just a general, a place where you're able to store your RVs or trailers or if semis are coming in and they are unable to park it in their home or other business. It just allows for essentially kind of like an overflow lot, I guess, if you will, just a location to place those. I know that Commissioner Meek lives near a couple of these, so, but I think it's just...
So in your case, the business is not focused primarily, I guess, on parking semis?
Correct. It's for a range of just bigger vehicles where you may not have the space to place it at your home or wherever else.
Okay. And one of the issues that came up, and with respect to the other facility that we had talked about, was whether semis that were parked there would be allowed to keep running while they were parked.
Or their freezer box.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, reefer truck.
Do you have any plan to try to regulate that? The hours of operation thing, I mean, I can understand on the one hand, somebody's coming in late at night or whatever, but, you know, when you're, when you're anywhere near residential, it seems to me like hours of operation would be a good thing, but failing that, perhaps, and I'm not saying I'm failing that, but do you have any way to control whether people keep their vehicles operating? The noise from a running semi is considerable, or freezer.
I mean, we could certainly put language in the master design statement. I know that the applicants don't office far from this property, so I'm sure they'll be monitoring that to, you know, some extent. What, but idling overnight, again, other than just prohibiting like overnight idling, then we can certainly do that, but...
Right, there could be somebody that runs cold storage in their, in their truck trailer, and they just park it there, might have a vehicle parked where they're going to park, do the shuttle and go home and come back and, you know, that's not storage, in my, in my opinion. That's just convenience.
Right, yeah.
I believe that this being a large vehicle storage lot, it should have requirements where vehicles aren't left running, or the reefer trailer freezer boxes.
Yeah, we could definitely add, with that limiting language, that idling shall not be permitted, just on the lot or on the property at all.
We might need the right, yeah, we, would idling get the freezer too, you think?
Yes.
Would, yeah, what, would that be, would idling include both of those?
Extended idling.
Extended idling would be the...
Yeah, every vehicle has to idle at some point. The way the truck lots, RV lots and whatnot handle it is they call it extended idling, which means and/or abandoned idling.
So I can put that in bold underneath section 8.1, where it has the trucks that are permitted to park there, extended idling shall not be permitted.
You know, I would really like for you to go ahead and just add of the engine or freezer unit, so that it's clear that we're not talking about just a truck.
Yeah, motor or box.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
The engine or freezer unit, both.
Commissioners, perhaps we should hear from our neighbors as well?
Absolutely.
I think we might be getting ahead of them on some of the issues that they might have.
Absolutely.
Let's begin with Ava Wills. You have five minutes to address the commission.
Thank you, and good afternoon, commission members. My name is Ava Wills, and I reside at 7839 Southwest 77th Street. I'm a property owner and a longtime resident of the area that we're discussing here today. And I'd like to express my opposition and concerns to this PUD 1958. I, as well as the other property owners in the area, are opposed and have many concerns still related to this project, and many of the residents are actually in attendance in the meeting today. But the area surrounding this property that we're talking about, the rezoning, is agricultural, as we have discussed, and most of the residents in the area have eight, many acres, not many acres, but several acres on which their homes reside. And there are no apartments or subdivisions or businesses that really access 74th between Council and Rockwell, so it's pretty quiet and relatively low amount of traffic, most times of the day at least. So the rezoning doesn't seem to be a consistent use of land in the area. It seems like it would, this type of a project would be better suited in an area with high levels of traffic and truck traffic particularly, large vehicle traffic, and located near interstates or major intersections. So a few of the concerns that we have as property owners first, and you have touched on this topic, is the noise, and I haven't heard any, other than requiring the trucks not to be running overnight, I haven't really heard anything that would eliminate the noise for the most part for trucks entering all hours of the day and night or potentially continuing to run. Then, you know, the chain-link fence with a mesh screening or privacy screening really doesn't do much for noise, I don't think. Another concern, of course, you talked about millings in the parking lot, so the dust that it could be created could be a topic of concern, as well as, while the amounts might be low, I agree, there could be toxicity from the millings that could impact the environment. Also, the increased traffic in the area presents major safety and hazard concerns. The street is a two-lane road, and the intersections on each side of the property, major intersections, Council and Rockwell, are really not built for large truck traffic. The turning radius, I think, would not be sufficient or safe. The 100-foot area that they have for the trucks to pull in, if it's really the semi-trucks, would only allow for one truck to be off of the 74th Street, and if others were lined up, they would be blocking vision in the street of a, the single lane in two-lane street, so it would add a lot of safety concerns. And last but not least would be what could potentially be reduction in property values for the residents in the area, and without an impact analysis, you don't really know what type of reduction you might be facing. So that is basically the concerns that I have, and I would ask you to consider those concerns when looking at approving this measure, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wills. Next, we have Roy Wolf. You have five minutes to address the commission.
My name is Roy Wolf. My family and I have lived at Southwest 74th, 7529 Southwest 74th Street for the last 50 years. I moved there when I was eight years old. I can tell you pretty much everything that's happened on this stretch of 74th Street for that length of time. I've seen developments happen, and I've seen some developments not happen. I'm asking you today to not let this development happen. My biggest concern is the fact that we have absolutely no idea what will be parked there. The PUD says semis, trailers, and RVs, that's a very broad range of things that can be parked. Me and my neighbors are seeing this. 180 refrigerated trailers running 24 hours a day, which you guys have already addressed. There's a possibility that we could have 180 cattle haulers loaded with manure with wonderful odor blowing in our yards. We could have 180 hazardous material trailers with who knows what loaded on and parked there. We could have 180 trailers trash waiting to go to a dump that'd be parked there for a couple of days with not knowing. We don't know. There's 180 parking lot spots that can easily turn into 180 bathroom stalls with no offices, restrooms available on site. There's a possibility of someone actually living in an RV and no one there to stop them. 180 trucks dripping oil and diesel fuel on the ground. Why would I worry about fixing the leak when I can just park it there and walk away from it? There's no one there to monitor it. It's self-service, do whatever. Nobody's minding the store. If you have something you don't want to look at in your neighborhood, association has a rule against parking it there, and it fits in these three categories, bring it down. We got a spot for you on 74th Street. If you have the monthly fee, we have the spot. The PUD calls for site-proof fencing. City code says a fence can only be six to eight foot tall. A semi-trailer's 12 foot. The math doesn't add up. The math doesn't add up. The development will cover, will offer zero economic benefits for the city of Oklahoma City. There's no sales tax to be collected, and there are no employment opportunities. We met with the attorneys, we were given this conceptual plan, and, uh, we're told then that it was subject to change, but what will it change to? We don't know. We would like to see something you can read without a microscope, and then has a definite site plan that will be finished with the finished product. In regards to the finished surface, asphalt millings appear to be glorified gravel to me. These are old roads that are ground up, hence the term milled. Milled anything amidst dust, I don't care if it's milled grain or milled asphalt. This leads me to another thought. What if Hobby Lobby were allowed to use these millings on their parking lot? What would that complex look like? Then there's the new Carvana lot at fifty-four hundred South Rockwell, Associated Foods at fifty-six hundred South Council. All lots that are concrete or rolled asphalt. Should they not be held accountable to the same standards of what these are? I please ask you to vote as if you were living across the street from this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Next, we have Todd McClure. And you have five minutes to address the commission.
Okay. Uh, I live at seventy-seven twenty-one Southwest Seventy-Fourth Street. And my main concern is this is basically a residential street. It's a two-lane street, no shoulder. Uh, there are, between Council and Rockwell, there are thirteen homes, rural homes, on, uh, anywhere from five acres or so. But there are thirteen homes, there is no commercial area really right there. So I think there's really a better area for this particular parking lot. To have, I mean, just to have a hundred and fifty or so, or hu- actually, more than a hundred and fifty semi trailers that can actually pull through that small two-lane road through the, a residential area, it just doesn't make sense. So I just ask that you reject this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McClure. We have no one else signed up to speak on this item. Thoughts, commissioners? I, I will ask an initial question at least for, uh, Caitlin. Talk to us about, I'm, I'm concerned about security, the fact that there is not someone there. The exact scenario that was brought up.
Right.
I drive in my truck, I don't leave, I've got a ba- I've got all the things I need in my truck, so I'm just gonna live in there and park my car. There's no way for you all to monitor that. So what's, so why wouldn't we, as the commission, mandate twenty-four-hour personnel on the property? At the very, at a minimum? You know, that's not even to talk about the compatibility issues, which we should get into, but could you talk to us about your thoughts on security?
So, that is correct. There would not be any personnel twenty-four-seven on-site. There will be, you know, cameras monitoring the lot and who's coming and going. It's not gonna be zero, I mean, the lot will have to be maintained, and the lot will have to be monitored by the property owners and applicants. So there will be some sort of, I hate saying monitoring again, but there, it will be monitored, uh, to an extent. Of course, yeah, there's not gonna be any one that's there twenty-four-seven. To some of the other points, I just wanna note again, some of the, you know, revisions that we did stipulate and make in the master design statement with putting that distance, uh, off of Seventy-Fourth Street and doing that concrete paving, of course, we're gonna agree to the ribbons or curbs around the parking lot to help mitigate any issue with the asphalt millings. I also wanna point out, there's an oil rig to the south of this property, that, that existing oil rig, which they're gonna have to accommodate that, so the lot won't even go all the way down to the south. Um, it will stop, and if that is a concern at all. Um, and then also just the fact that, you know, Council is also, there's other two-lane roads that kind of lead to uses such as this. And then you can see on the aerial here, there's, uh, significant outdoor storage and things like that. It's just not even a mile to the west. So in terms of, you know, compatibility, that's something to, uh, consider, but, yeah.
Good, an interesting point. Thoughts, commissioners?
I, I still have concerns with both ingress and egress. Uh, they're setting the gate back a hundred feet. If you've got a WB fifty-four, I mean, that's pretty much, you're gonna get one truck in there. You might get two shorter trucks. But my problem is if there's no one on-site, their gate code doesn't work or whatever, they have to wait for somebody to, they have to call and wait for somebody to get there. That truck's blocking the inbound lane at that time, you've got other trucks coming along trying to get in, and they can't get in 'cause it's blocked. I really feel you need the, basically, the turnaround at the entry, a way for a truck to get back out. Um, I think that's achievable. The other thing that I'm concerned about is trucks getting out. This is a two-lane road. You're gonna have to have a very generous radius driveway so that they don't cross that center line when they pull out to Seventy-Fourth, 'cause I think that's a huge, a huge danger, that they, if they have to cross that center line to be able to get out.
I think, and we could require that. Um, and I, again, I, I lean towards requiring the, um, twenty-four-hour security. I, I can't imagine having a facility like this. I think we're asking for people to live in their trucks. I think we're asking for that.
I think, I think a little guard shack that helps with access and security would solve a lot of, I'm not saying it solves everything, 'cause there's a lot of issues, but I think it could address a couple of the concerns.
'Cause then that's the only way you can have reasonable enforcement of all of our idling provisions as well, which get at the noise issues with, that we're concerned about. Commissioner Meek?
I do have a quick question, Caitlin. If we could go back to the conceptual site plan, um, once you drive the big semi or the big RV in, and you do your parking or, or you go pick it up, one of my big concerns is there's gonna be vehicles coming to get these vehicles, or vehicles being left once they've gotten these large, large, uh, pieces of equipment. So there's a lot of switcham swatcham going on, and there's not a general parking area for, you know, passenger vehicles that you're going back and forth in. I know if you're, let's say, I'm going to get an RV, not gonna walk to this place.
Right.
Um, so you're compounding the parking, and I don't, I don't know with asphalt millings, how you mark whose space is what, and we did talk about that. Therefore, I very highly doubt it's gonna look like this conceptual plan. It's gonna be a hodgepodge of people parking wherever they abandoned their vehicles, you know, abandoned their large vehicle at. One more concern I have, um, is you have a gate and you have an automatic card operator on the main entry. What was being proposed was an automatic exit gate on the, uh, or you only have the one access now.
Right, because of that existing street, yeah.
So this, this one's not updated, uh, okay. So you do have the, the, what you call the horseshoe bend or whatever, that you go back out the main entry, correct?
So that one, we would just stay there. There's a, and it eventually dead ends the further south it goes, but they would have to just work around that existing road. There is property behind it that could take access from this road, so they're essentially leaving horseshoe bend alone. So there will be the one access to meet that a hundred and fifty-foot separation requirement.
Okay, well, my point with that is that access would have to be much wider, because you could very well have multiple vehicles meeting at that, at that point. Now that we're down to one access, uh, it doesn't look like it's a, it's as wide as one lane.
On the conceptual site plan?
Right.
Right, well, and this, this is subject to change. Of course, it is a conceptual site plan, and then, again, the separation requirement, uh, that is obviously not met here, but, um, it will be wide enough to accommodate if one person is pulling up. There's gonna be space on the side, if, you know, I don't know how that would theoretically work, but we also just anticipate this to be an intermittent, intermittent use, so not everyone's gonna be coming and going at the same time, like a rush hour type situation. And we could also, for regarding the lot lines, um, we would be able to paint the asphalt millings for the lines. It would have to be maintained quite a bit. Uh, we could potentially do, uh, curb stops or something along those lines to keep it more organized.
Um, I'll add another issue onto this, um, to Mr. Wolf's point about what could be stored there. So being clear about there being a ban on livestock, being clear that there is a ban on hazardous materials, being clear on, and again, all those things could not be done without li- without a person being there to ensure compliance. And so that's a definite, for me, is have to have twenty-four-hour, a human being, security officer there.
Well, and that's one thing that concerned me before the water, uh, you know, staff was recommending water be extended. The TE was saying basically they didn't have to. Thankfully, they've, they, they've said that they would, uh, extend the water service, but, you know, you get one of these on fire, all it does is set the next one on fire. Next thing you know, you have a row of them on fire, and, and it's a definite fire safety hazard, especially not being able to have somebody on-site to check what's coming in, uh, what's being parked there for extended period of time.
Yep.
And it's cargo.
I'd like to ask staff, I, I don't know anything about millings. Do we have concerns about, um, their environmental impact? Or is this something that we do commonly, or? Mr. Lodge, can you help us out? And would it help if they were sprinkled periodically? Or would that be worse?
Berry Lodge, Public Works, so it's not something that we see very often. Uh, and, and I, I, I may be mistaken here, but I think the, the general requirement for parking areas is that it be a paved surface. It, as a general rule, we, if you've got a commercial site and you, or you're gonna have parking spaces on there, we will not allow gravel or that kind of thing to be used for the, the permanent parking. Now, there have been exceptions made. Plaza District is kind of the, the one that comes to mind immediately, where we've got the decomposed granite that is put in as the, uh, as the parking surface.
And we do have impervious parking standards, specific standards in place for that.
I, I think there are, yes. And, and I share Commissioner Meek's, uh, concern as well about if, if there's not, if there's not a curb or some type of a ribbon gutter to confine material, it, it will spread out over time and, and it'll be lost. So, uh, I think there's some requirements that need to be put in as far as that is concerned. I can't address the environmental concerns of it a whole lot. I, I don't see that there's a whole lot of, of environmental concern more with the millings than there would be with an asphalt parking, where you'd put tack coat down, and you're gonna have that material on the ground anyway. Uh, so, it, but it is something that we don't see on a, on a routine basis. One other thing I would like to mention, just not associated with that, but in reference to the driveways, uh, that are coming onto this, the typical standard width driveway, or maximum width for commercial driveway is thirty feet. And we would have a thirty-foot radius. If they want to have anything different than that, they need to submit that to Public Works for specific approval, uh, before construction can begin.
And would, would that ti- typical thirty feet, would that accommodate a semi truck turning out onto a single lane? Or, yeah, it does.
And not really, it would not. And, and, but those are the instances where we will look at, at considering a, a wider driveway or, or even a larger radius, where there may be conflict with oncoming traffic, that we, we would look at that, that safety aspect of that. So we, we have, uh, approved some that are wider, uh, wider, wider drives and, and larger turning radiuses as well.
I was looking at the, uh, turning radiuses, 'cause I had some concerns about those, and they're only twenty-five feet. And the standard's thirty, isn't it correct, for this type of application, or the minimum?
And typically, the commercial, a commercial driveway, uh, standard radius is fifteen feet. We see those go up, uh, larger than that. Typical residential turning, or our curb return radius would be, is, is thirty, is what we typically see on that. And so, it, but as part of the, if they wanna request a, a wider drive or a larger, uh, turning radius, or radius on the, on the curb returns, we would ask them to provide the turning movements of the trucks, what they're anticipating coming in and, and out of that facility.
Okay. Because I, I, I think you're gonna need more of a thirty-foot turning radius. And looking at the, the site exhibit, it's not dimensioned here, but the, uh, west turning radius is twenty-five feet, and it already appears that it may go over the property line, uh, the adjoining property, which I don't think would be allowed.
No, you're, you're correct there, and, and I think that you're, you're right, that the twenty-five foot will not, uh, would not be large enough for that truck to make the turn without swinging out into the oncoming lane, uh, to make that turn, if, if it's, if it's from that, you know.
But I believe the west one's been removed. They're down to one entry now.
Oh, okay.
They're down to one entry now, and that was my concern about if you're down to one, your previous plan showed two. Why not double the width of that one so that, that also helps that turning radius where you don't cross the center line of Seventy-Fourth upon exit?
And, and it would need to be shifted such that whatever radius on the curb return is put in, that it would not extend past the property line.
Right.
I'm just gonna jump right up and say, it sounds to me like, in this category, we have any number of specific technical requirements that need to be, um, detailed and thought through and maybe negotiated. Um, and on the other hand, we have just the straight land use. There are, uh, a couple of these uses in my ward. They are very, very, very difficult to keep from turning into, um, icehores and junkyards, no matter what the use unit allows. Uh, maybe not this year, maybe not even five years from now, but eventually, they're just a mess. And I, I, I don't think I can support this application, so.
I think it'd be good to take the temperature of where we are, because I, I, at the very least, think we need to take two weeks. I'm not convinced that we've addressed all the issues. I'd love to see these TEs in writing. I would love to see us specifically address these issues with access, ingress, egress, all of those issues. I also don't think that the screening is satisfactory, uh, because of that concern you're just talking about, Commissioner Powers. Are we just setting up our neighbors to have to live next to blight? I will not vote for this proposal at all if it doesn't have twenty-four-hour required manned security. But, um, I just think that with this number of issues, we need to, we need to stop and have a, have some more detailed conversations. Other thoughts, commissioners? I mean, I, I can't even make the motion, but.
I agree. I, I believe that, uh, even Caitlin believed that I don't think this would push through today. Uh, I believe it needs to be deferred. I believe there's too many red lines, there's too many not, uh, up-to-date drawings provided to the commissioners. I would, I would, uh, I would ask that you really look at the applicant, really look at bringing something back that, that, uh, improves this greatly, uh, at risk of failure. And, uh, I'd ask that we make a motion to defer this.
To the next, thoughts on that, Caitlin?
Agree completely.
And I, I'd ask Commissioner Meek if, if you don't, I'd love to be included in those conversations. I'd also love for our neighbors to be included in those conversations as we move forward as well, if, if possible. So, the motion before the commission is to, uh, continue this item until the next meeting of the planning commission, which is August tenth. Is there a second? And that motion's been seconded by, uh, Commissioner Powers. And the motion to, uh, to, to grant the continuance is, is from, uh, Commissioner Meek.
Sorry, I was trying to.
All good. And the motion passes.
I have one quick comment on that one.
Please.
That I just think may, may be worth considering in subsequent discussions with the neighbors is, this debate about asphalt millings versus concrete paving or, or asphalt paving is, you know, it's worth considering which one's better overall for, for. know, it's worth considering which one's better overall for impervious surfaces, and so if you were to actually ask the applicant to pave this whole thing with asphalt, that's creating a lot more surface runoff than if it's millings, it allows that water to percolate into the soil. Not that that's the deciding factor, but I think it's worth having that discussion.
Yeah, and I believe that through the neighborhood meetings, even the neighbors that aren't excited about this coming to their area, where I believe that wasn't one of the contentious issues.
I'd also say that I'm sorry to our neighbors for having to come all the way down here, and then, of course, we're going to ask you to come back again in two weeks, but bear with us in this process as we move forward. And hopefully, it means that we're addressing meaningfully the concerns that you have. So, appreciate you all coming down here, a long way from this part of Ward Three, so we appreciate you being here. We're now in line for item 13.
Item 13 is PUD 1959, application to rezone 11121, Southwest 29th Street, from AA.
Good afternoon, Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Sarah Road, on behalf of the applicant. This is an approximate eight-acre piece of land, east of Mustang Road, on the north side of Southwest 29th. This PUD is a mixed-use allowing commercial in the south, 500 feet, and storage in the remainder north portion of this property. Staff has recommended approval of the application with no TEs. We would ask for your approval and be happy to answer you.
Thank you.
There's quite a bit of commercial development in this area, just to the south, that was recently rezoned as well.
Thank you, this is in Ward Three, Commissioner Meek, it's just, it's your day.
Are you picking on me?
I'm up next, three times in a row.
Okay, I feel bad.
It balances out.
I haven't spoke to any protesters, nor the applicant, anything about this, but I did read through it thoroughly. I do not see any issues with this. I want the other commissioners to look at possible adding a TE that all drive aisles for the storage area must meet fire department requirements. I know I'm that guy.
It would have to, anyway.
It would have to, I understand, but TEs like this make me feel better.
Happy to, happy to add that TE.
Help me understand, Mark, about the scre, I'm sorry, I'm stopping you during me, help me understand about the screening, you're saying there's not going to be any screening around, because the first, the first however many feet did you say?
It just allows, if the buildings were to sit on the property line, it would require masonry all the way along that property line, any setback allows for a security fence, which you would see in most storage applications, but you would additionally have to have landscaping in front of that screening to minimize any of that, so.
So, here, the requirement?
If it's off the property line more than 10 feet, if the buildings or anything are off the property line more than 10 feet, then it allows the, it allows the ability to use a security fence in conjunction with screening.
Gotcha.
If the buildings are on the property line, it would require masonry all along those, the backs of those buildings, because they would in fact be the backs of the buildings.
Okay. That makes me feel better. Thoughts, commissioners?
So, there wouldn't be any landscape requirement if the back of the building was built on the property line?
You couldn't.
Right, and so, is there any provision that all of it has to be one way, or the other, as far as how this is being built? I mean, you couldn't have some of them built along the property line, and then others 10 foot off, and have a security fence?
You wouldn't, they would either be laid out similar to what you see if the backs of the buildings were, you would have them all along that with a drive aisle in the middle, serving both sides, or you would have the drive aisle, or you would have them set off of the property line with landscaping, or you would have the drive aisle on the outside, that would be, you would have them all in a line, you wouldn't, you don't typically just jag on, it's not efficient layout for many storage.
With this many uses, and with different types, would you be against a specific plan?
I don't think that I'm against a specific plan for that, I mean, is it just the south 500 feet that we're looking at? I mean, it'd be retail frontage, so.
I'm not opposed to it, just so we can see what it looks like, and I'd be particularly concerned with the, and I think I can, I'm following you, Mark, on the screening, but I'd love to see that, I'd love to see the, how the traffic is going to flow, those are just my immediate concerns, but other thoughts on that?
I could agree to this specific point.
I guess I'm just going to say this, because it drives me crazy, you know, once upon a time, we restricted commercial development to major intersections, and the development-related policies still say they favor commercial development clustered in nodes at arterial or collector intersections, or along brief main streets, dark corridors, over commercial development, extending in a linear pattern. We've gotten in this habit of just extending commercial along every major street, just stripped out, and it's not a good thing, not in favor of it.
We don't have anybody else signed up to speak, any other thoughts on it? I mean, I think that's a valid point, but I also think, you know, there is other, we're talking about Mustang Road that's developing, it seems appropriate and convenient for the people who are moving into these areas to have some access to some more commercial development, which makes a lot of sense to me. So, I'm not necessarily as opposed, I'm not necessarily opposed to the use, I'm just concerned about the site, and the way the site is laid out, and the way that it protects the character of the area. But, but at least we're going to get the chance to address that in specific plan, so. Other, other thoughts, commissioners?
And the specific plan would remove my TE for the fire, you know, drives not complying on this preview, so, I'm good with that.
Okay, so then I guess we just need, if, there's no one signed up to speak, I guess we just need a motion to recommend approval of the PUD, and also add a technical evaluation, requiring specific plan, with the commission reserving the right to review the screening and traffic flow. Anything else that needs to be added to that? Anything you think, Mark? Okay.
Did you say, when you say "traffic flow, including fire"?
Including fire, there we go.
All right, bear with me.
It's okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to approve PUD 1959, and make a TE where we are requesting a specific plan, and specific plan to include screening and traffic flow, including fire.
Excellent. Commissioner Meek moves to recommend approval of PUD 1959, subject to the additional technical evaluation as read into the record. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Clare, please cast your votes. The motion passes, thank you. We're now in line for item 14.
Item 14 is PUD 1962, application to rezone 6800 Miramar Boulevard, from AA, and Healthy Neighborhoods Overlay District.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, on behalf of the applicant. This is a PUD that would rezone from AA to a modified C3. It is in close proximity to Millwood School, so we did reach out to them, and we spoke to none other than John Pettis, who's in the back of the room today, to run this by him. He didn't have any concerns with it, the idea of bringing in commercial development, increasing the abdolorin base, which of course benefits a school, was something that they were supportive of. There are five TEs, and we agree with two through five, what we would ask to do as relates to TE1 with the signage, because we've agreed to the specific plan, we would like to defer the discussion of the signage to the specific plan, reserving authority and discretion to Planning Commission to weigh in on size, height, all of those things. So, we would modify TE1 to say that the discussion on signage would be deferred to a specific plan, with review authority and discretion over size and height granted to Planning Commission at that time. And that, as you know, that's something we've done on a handful of PUDs. We don't want to agree to eight-foot unlimited, there could be a user that the Planning Commission decided, you know, warranted a taller sign, so we don't want to foreclose that ability.
Makes sense to me, this is in my ward, I am in support, I'm glad you went through the process of working with our leaders at Millwood, and I'm in full support, of course, support that change to the, to TE1 as well. We have no one signed up to speak on this item. Any questions, comments from commissioners?
Just one question on the street itself, it's not in very good condition, right at the entrance of this property, it turns into even worse condition, I didn't know if there was a future plan.
Yeah, so, I mean, obviously half-street improvements will be required when we come in for building permit, and at that time, in order to make it marketable, I'm sure they'll have to do something. We'd certainly love it if the city would take care of the assets that they have, but...
Get in line.
We may have to, yeah, we may have to do it ourselves, that's fine.
Any other questions, comments from commissioners? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend approval of City Council of PUD 1962, subject to the technical evaluations, and amending technical evaluation one as read into the record by the applicant.
Commissioner Clare Moose recommends approval of PUD 1962 to City Council, subject to the technical evaluations, including the revisions to TE1 as read into the record. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers, please cast your votes.
Thank you.
And the motion passes, thank you. We're in line for item 15.
This is SPUD 1523, application to rezone 5501 North Martin Luther King Avenue, from R1 HNO to SPUD 1523.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, John Pettis, 228, Robert S. Care here, on behalf of the applicant, the applicant wishes to redevelop this half-acre site, this site has actually been vacant for almost 30 years, and the applicant actually is a small chef in Oklahoma City area, matter of fact, Ms. Tia is here, she has a food truck, and she would like to redevelop the site, actually, as a restaurant, but wanted to have the flexibility, just in case the restaurant may not work out, to have something else at this particular site. We wanted to limit the hours of operation, also limit the use of marijuana on this site, because we know that especially in underserved areas, medical marijuana places are growing fast in the area, and we wanted to make sure that this development becomes an excellent development for the people in this area.
Thank you, and this is in my ward, I am definitely in support, obviously, it hasn't been developed in 30 years, I think we've all driven, anybody who lives in this, in Ward Seven like we do, is very familiar with driving past this vacant area. I am curious, though, if there have been any discussions, I know that I've previously been invited to some meetings about development to the north, so I'm wondering if you all have talked to them about any of that, and then, two, I wondered if you might talk to us about any engagement at all with the neighbors, or even the nearby residents?
Yes, so we have had an opportunity to meet with the Neighborhood Association, they love the simple fact that this particular development is limited in the uses, and limited in the hours of operation. And so, one of the sticking points had to do with the whole idea of medical marijuana, because if you go just north of this particular site, actually where the Dollar, Dollar General, Family Dollar is, there's actually unfortunately two medical dispensaries, and so the concern from the Neighborhood Association, as well as the nearby neighbors, they did not want medical marijuana facility near them. And they wanted, they wanted a restaurant, but they, again, wanted it to be limited, and not a restaurant that turns into a club at night that goes to 2:00 in the morning. So, that's hence the reason why, 7:00 AM to 10:30 PM. And I do want to point out that this is, this is in the Adventure District, so concerts happen all the time in this area, and actually, concerts happen past 10:30, and so, the, again, the applicant wanted to be a good neighbor, and limit the timeframe of operation.
Any questions, comments from commissioners? I'm in full support, and we have no one signed up to speak.
Mr. Pettis, in your, in your list of uses permitted on site, there is outdoor sales and display, and outdoor storage, it's further limited to accessory to eating, establishment and catering, what would that consist of?
So, that was a kind of a recommendation for, from staff, the applicant actually wishes that from time to time, maybe to bring the food truck up, and maybe able to sell things while the building is in renovation, so that's kind of basically temporarily, but that's just something that felt that needed to be in there. But, the ultimate goal is to turn the building into a restaurant, but while it's being renovated, the applicant wishes to sell food.
Well, just the way we have to look at things, of course, what this means is, if the restaurant never happens, if we approve this, we're permitting this site to be used for food trucks, so, just something to keep in mind, and I understand best-laid plans, right? So, I just wanted to be clear about what it was that we were really talking about there.
That's important.
With the intended use as a restaurant, I did not see on Exhibit B any indication of dumpster locations, I wanted to make sure you would be agreeable to adding a TE, that dumpsters shall be located 50 feet from any adjacent residential uses.
Absolutely, the applicant does agree to that, and the applicant also, for the record, agrees to all TEs that staff have listed.
Love that. Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Sign none. Commissioner Clare?
Okay. If there's nothing further, I'm ready to make a motion to recommend to City Council approval of SPUD 1523, subject to the technical evaluations, adding technical evaluation six, that dumpsters shall be located 50 feet from any adjacent residential uses.
Commissioner Clare moves to recommend approval of SPUD 1523 to City Council, subject to the additional technical evaluation added in to the record. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek, please cast your votes. And the motion passes, good luck.
All right, thank you, Commissioner.
We're now in line for item 16.
This is SPUD 1536, application to, well, to rezone 1229 Northwest 122nd Street, from SPUD 1058.
Good afternoon, Mason Schwartz, 522, Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This property is located on Northwest 122nd, between Western and May, I'm sorry, Western and Penn. It is, the property was originally, or previously zoned through a spud in 2018, at that time, the spud was contemplated as an extension of the Congregiate to the East, which has been developed there, which was not ultimately developed on this property, so it was ultimately separated, and so now, the property remains undeveloped. Our client is seeking to develop a office warehouse project on the property. My client owns a landscaping business, he will use the property for, to construct new offices for his business, as well as additional units for prospective tenants as well. There is a residence directly to the west there, along 122nd, we did speak with the owner of that residence, she supports the application. To the west of that residence, as you can see, is a substation, and then outside of this picture, is also a personal storage directly... this picture is also a personal storage directly west of that personal storage development. So, we do believe that this concept is consistent, compatible with the land use pattern up and down this area of 122nd. We did continue this a couple of times previously. We wanted to allow time to an engineer to come in and work some of this stuff into the site plan, which was completed and provided to staff this week. The staff report does recommend approval, subject to four TEs. We can agree to all four TEs. So, we are unaware of any protests, happy to answer any questions and ask for your approval.
Thank you. I, I'm, one, impressed by the depth of the bench here for Williams, Box, Forchion, Bullard, the very impressive crew. I, so it sounds like we agree, I think when we saw this before, we weren't clear about the screening requirements with the residents to the east, and it sounds like we've fixed that, which is great. I think that was one of my concerns. Other than that, I'm, I'm in support of this. Questions, comments from commissioners? I think we're ready.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend approval, City Council of SPUD 1536, subject to the technical evaluations.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend approval of SPUD 1536 to City Council, subject to the technical evaluations. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Mason, looks like you got off easy. Caitlin got the tough ones today, so does that mean you all have to switch next time?
Tell the cookie crumble sometimes. Thank you.
All right. We're in line for item 17.
This is E7570, preliminary plat of Eclipse, located east of North MacArthur Boulevard and south of Northwest 164th Street.
Hi, my name's Ophelia Kencio with HOA Zollers, 701 North Broadway. This is, this item was continued from the July 13 Planning Commission. There were two major concerns that were talked about. One was the access to the east and the south, and whether that would be gated, and it will be a gated community. The communities, the people from this community will have access to exit and enter through to the east and through the south, and it will also provide access for emergency vehicles. The type of gates that are going to be installed are going to be custom-built for the site. And the other item that was talked about was the sanitary bins, and the, our client has agreed to limit the number of bins. These are smaller families that will be living here, so he will limit them to two bins per home, and he will add that in the covenants and restrictions. The city, the staff has recommended approval of this preliminary plat, and we ask for your approval as well.
Thank you, and I appreciate the effort to clarify on the gate issue. I know that that was really an important, one of the issues, as well as the issues with the Polly carts as well. We do have one resident signed up to speak. Perhaps we should hear from, from him first, unless you all have other questions, commissioners? All right. We have David Bauer. And I don't think he's here. Guess he's good with it at this point. David Bauer? Other questions, commissioners?
I have, sorry, I'm sorry. I am so sorry. I thought I had one. I do have it. Michael Cromaz. I am so sorry. Glad you raised your hand.
Yeah. Name is Michael Cromaz, 1326 Fritz Drive, Edmund. Good afternoon. I'm the current HOA president of Monarch Ridge, and here representing the residents and families in that neighborhood just to the east of this proposed subdivision. While we have already submitted an official letter a couple of times now outlining all our concerns, I wanted to again bring up three important, significant concerns that my, our residents are having. One is fire access. The current preliminary plat shows nine dead-end private access drives serving as the sole means of connection of 56 homes. Of these nine dead-end private accesses, seven extend past the code maximum distance of 150 feet in length and do not provide an approved area for the fire apparatus to turn around. That's per the International Fire Code 2015, Section 503.2.5 on dead ends. It is also our understanding that the staff report that the maintenance of these private access drives will be the responsibility of the Property Owners Association. If this in fact is the case, our fear is that this may lead them to falling in disrepair over time in the future, and since they do not fall within the city's purview, it's a concern. Additionally, per the plan of OKC, our neighborhoods, the Eclipse, this one, Monarch Ridge, and Still Meadows, just to the southwest, all lie within an extended rural response time for fire service, with the closest fire station being located more than seven and a half miles away at 168th and Pennsylvania, Station Number 37. There also seems to be no provision within the PUD or preliminary plat to provide automatic fire suppression of any sort. We understand that this type of deviation from the code was approved in another neighborhood that falls into a more urban area with faster response times. And concerning all these factors, we as Monarch Ridge are incredibly worried about the possible fire event spreading between homes from the new subdivision to the adjacent neighborhoods, and request this code variance be denied because of it being a rural area and request a further discussion to vet these dangerous possibilities, and in a minimum, add a TE to ensure they comply with the fire codes that are set in place. Our second concern is stormwater. We've brought this up several times. Monarch Ridge lies roughly 20 feet below the new development site in elevation. Our neighborhood already deals with stormwater runoff, flooding issues from undeveloped sites, and are worried about the, the problem increasing exponentially once more impervious elements are added. The staff report also states that the private drainage easements are responsibility of the Properties Owners Association. Much like the private access drives, we are worried that these two might become unkept in the future and fall in disrepair, so we kindly ask that more discussion and information be provided to ensure that the stormwater management will be handled appropriately and safely for everybody within the Eclipse site, within any additional negative consequences to prevent downstream problems for us. Lastly, is traffic. Vehicular traffic is another major concern at Monarch Ridge. We are a very mobile neighborhood with kids and adults walking at all times of day and night. Luckily, to date, we have not had an issue like Still Meadows, which had a child hit by a vehicle. However, with the potential of another 100-plus cars added to our small neighborhood, the chances of similar events happening will increase dramatically. In light of this, we are in favor of the vehicular traffic gate that they're proposing on our western stub street, but would also like speed bump mitigation measures to at least pause traffic and speeding on abatement into our subdivision if the gates are not allowed. Thank you for your time and listening to that long message.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I'm going to do my best and hope that Barry, wherever you are, you're going to help me and correct me, or someone from staff will correct me where I'm saying something wrong. Number one, I think it's important, as you're looking at this plat, to recognize that the distinction between private drives and private streets. The main thoroughfares in which, that are connected to your streets in your neighborhood, both on the south and to the east, are private streets. They are built to city standards, so they'll look like city standards. They'll be that width, all of that, which, which means they also will be eligible at some point for the city to take them over and for them to be publicly maintained, which is a very important difference between private drives that are of a smaller width and have to be privately maintained and cannot be made public streets at any future point without those, that widening and that improvement. So, some of these, some of the homes are actually off of private drives, but those main thoroughfares, again, that connect to your, to the neighborhood, to the other neighborhoods, are private streets. So, I do think that distinction is important in this instance. There are gates between, between each of the points of access, so that will limit the traffic flow inherently. As far as the concerns about drainage, Barry can say this better than me. I'm going to try once, Barry. I'm going to try. We can't, the development can't make it worse, which is not a comfort. And I apologize, but we are limited by what the law says we can and cannot require. But what, what they're obligated to do is they're supposed, they're to study the drainage, they're to understand the drainage, and they are required to prove to the city of Oklahoma City that they're not going to make the drainage issues worse by building this development. How'd I do, Barry? You want to give us any more insight into some of the concerns that he was?
No, you did good on that. I would just add to that, that the not being able to make it worse, they have to comply with Chapter 16 of the municipal code with all of their drainage and detention design. Yes, the detention ponds that will be built on there will be in a private drainage easement that will be maintained by the Property Owners Association of this new development. I would also point out that the detention pond that's on Monarch Ridge is exactly the same thing. It's maintained by the Property Owners Association for that development, and that's just a side note. But all of the other, all the other drainage requirements would have to comply with Chapter 16. Will I add one note also concerning the private drives and streets? They did agree at, at the last meeting to widen the drives to the 26-foot Oklahoma City standard. However, in order for those to be considered for being converted to public streets in the future, the street right-of-way would also have to be a minimum of 50 feet, and I haven't looked at that dimension. They may comply with that as well, but that would be a requirement before the city would take that over as a public street.
As far as the fire access, maybe Jeremy's a better person to address this, the concern about the trucks' ability to get in and out and navigate the neighborhood, could you address that at all, Barry, or?
Only because we had a meeting with the planning staff and with Mike Wilson, with Fire Department last week concerning that exact issue. His comment on that, and Sarah, correct me if I, if I misstate what Mike said, his comment was that he did not have a problem with the lengths of those private drives on being able to access with, those with the fire trucks. The trucks are going to be parked out on the, the main thoroughfare anyway, and that he was not concerned with that, with that distance.
Did I say that correctly?
She's, she's checking to make sure, but that, that's my recollection of what he said on that.
Barry, I have, I have a question, or rather, if I could get you to explain just a little, more for the benefit of the neighbors, because you mentioned it's a private detention pond on this site, much like Monarch Ridge has a private detention pond. They're both, but all ponds have to have an outfall, and if you look at this plan, there's a proposed connection from this proposed pond to Monarch's pond. So, that, again, they have to do all the calculations to make sure that they're not going to worsen any conditions, but all the ponds have to go someplace, and they're usually connected.
Yes, yeah, that's true. So, they've got two ponds that are proposed on this site. The one that's to the south, that is on the south side of the connecting road between the two developments, does drain through a storm sewer system that would go into the Monarch Ridge pond, and, and it's placed there because that is a natural low point in that property. So, that, that's really where they would need to place that in order to properly control the drainage on their site. But they would be limited to the historic runoff rate from that site. They, they could not exceed that after their, their development is done.
Just wanted, wanted to clarify that, so, you know, if this moves forward and they see them doing that work to connect those ponds, that they know that that's?
Yes, then that is correct.
Maybe an opportunity, if we ever develop a policy committee, would be to talk about the ways in which we protect neighbors from this issue with drainage and flooding. It's another area where I'm dissatisfied with our ability to really meaningfully mitigate problems that neighbors are facing, and so, it's not a good, it's not a good answer. It's just what the law allows us to be able to do. Other comments, questions from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, one clarification. I think Mike was in agreement with the, didn't have a problem with the length of the stubs, Mike Wilson at the Fire Department. He did, they did, and it is in the staff report, note an objection on the street stubs that they, those be designated as no parking. So, all of the parking for those units would have to be inside the garages that are be prepared, provided with that. They would not be allowed to park in those private drive street stubs. They must remain clear at all times.
So, ordinances are already requiring that, or we need to include that in the plat?
I think that probably needs to be included in the, in the, as a TE. I don't think the ordinance actually requires, doesn't address parking on a, on a private driveway, but because of the length of the drives and the access to those units, that is a requirement that Fire Department wants to put on those. And then, the other thing that they said, and I think this was created, was corrected, the minimum drive widths, they were shown as 13 feet originally on those private drives, and those need to be 20 feet.
And those part of the TEs that we agreed to. And also, the right-of-ways are a minimum of 50 feet?
Okay.
And we can add the additional TE for no parking on the driveways?
Okay.
Cool.
So, with that 50-foot minimum width, it would allow these private streets at some point in the future to be accepted by the city as a public street if, you know, going through all of the, the other application process.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
Going back to our conversations earlier about, you know, people being put on notice, it would seem like to me that those areas that are not going to be allowed for parking, for fire access, really need to be shown as fire lanes or, you know, red curbs or whatever it takes to get people's attention, because otherwise, you pull up in front of a house, someplace you're visiting, you park in the street, right?
Yep, and you're not going to be thinking about an emergency scenario. You're just going to assume, it's okay, I'm just going to be here for a couple of hours. Yeah. It's a real concern.
Fight hole would do a bill.
We, I, I did specifically ask our council, I realize another issue I did not address that our neighbor brought up, was about the ability to require some traffic mitigation such as a speed bump. We do not have the authority to make those additions through the plat process. But Traffic Commission has the authority to do that, correct?
That's private, if not.
Well, if they did it on their side of the street, though, the public side of the street, they could do that, theoretically.
Yeah, they would go to Traffic Commission.
So, Traffic Commission would be your avenue for finding a remedy there. Any other questions, comments?
I'm sorry, I want to follow this for just a second.
Please.
We do not have the authority to require it on a private street? I thought that the argument was always about whether we had the ability to require it on a public street.
Well, I, I think that, can you hear me? I think that the speed bumps, there's an issue with that, so I would want to look at that closer, but I don't think that we generally would require that.
Well, I guess it's about?
As far as for the planning commission.
The vehicles is what I'm concerned about. So, are we allowed to do that through the plating process? I mean, also, if we're talking about a speed bump, it sounds like where the desire for the speed bump is, is for the public streets, which we would not have the authority. This plat is limited to only, you know, this area. So, I guess through the plating process, can we add speed bumps on private?
I, I've not, I'm not seeing that before, so I don't, I don't know that I can answer that off the top of my head, but.
I know they have them around St. Anthony Hospital, so, on what appear to be public streets, they may be private streets. I don't think so, but, but be that as it may, in this case, I think the gates, if they are gates that have to be operated to get in and out, will serve that purpose.
It will. Anything else?
No, any other questions?
I think we're ready.
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved to recommend approval, City Council, Item C7570, subject to the technical evaluations.
Approving.
Oh, approve it, okay, sorry. Approving Item C7570, subject to the technical evaluations, adding TE8, that no parking shall be permitted on private drives to facilitate fire access.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve of C7570, subject to the technical evaluations as read into the record. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
We're in line for Item 18.
Item 18 is KC 7573, preliminary plat of Buffalo Farms, located south of Southwest 29th Street and east of South County Line Road.
Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Sarah Road, on behalf of the applicant. This is a preliminary plat that's in accordance with the recently approved PUD, not the southeast corner of Southwest 29th County Line. Staff recommends approval. We agree with all six TE's. I have seen both of the letters of concern on the drainage. I have coordinated with both of those people, spoke to Mr. Gary Kofed. We worked with him closely on the rezoning. We've ensured him that we'll continue to work closely with him. On the drainage, we agreed to provide detention on this site, even though it wasn't required during the rezoning process. And I sent an email to the lady to the south yesterday evening, we didn't hear back from her, but ensured her that we wouldn't block the water from the south to the north. And all of that, all the drainage design would be taken care of at the final plat stage. So we would be happy, I'm happy to answer any questions, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. This is in Ward 3. Commissioner Meek.
Thank you, Chairman. I've looked through all this, and I like the street stub that meets the tie-ins at County Line and 29th Street. I don't see any issues on this. I agree with the TE's. If anybody else has any discussion? If not, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Grubbs. The north, the north section, is there any reason why that does not connect to the rest of the development without having to go out to County Line Road?
Which, which portion?
It would be-
In between the two cul-de-sacs?
Yeah, just the furthest two north streets.
Furthest two north streets. I've looked at, that's, that's-
Yeah, 30th Terrace and 30th Street.
Yeah, that's the duplex portion. It's zone duplex and just kept it separated from the R1.
Would you consider a pedestrian connection to 31st Terrace?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with pedestrian connection.
By the way, I'm just thinking of kids going to visit friends, they're not out on, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I can agree to that.
Okay. And then the second one, if you could go to the next exhibit, the further south, looking at access from County Line Road, you've got the adjacent neighborhood to the west, and it tees in, it enters approximately where you have southwest 31st, where you show southwest 33rd Street, but you don't have southwest 33rd Street going out to County Line Road. But your entrances are basically a street to the south and a street to the north. So we have three staggered entrances along County Line Road. Is there, is there a reason for that?
Oh, that they're not aligned with the, with the drive to the west? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, like, if you look at this exhibit, you've got, you've got an exit to County Line Road that hits County Line Road about where the D is in the road. And then you've got your neighboring development to the west, 33rd Street, right in the center of that.
I have to have-
And then you come down.
I have to have two access points, and if I put one there, I'm afraid I don't have separation.
I, and I get the-
I will, I will, I'll look at it, but I'm afraid I don't have separation. I have to have the two access points.
Well, and I was just wondering if you could at least maybe align, if you can look at it, again, three, three points of conflict, seems to me like if you could get it on a two.
I understand what you're saying. I will take a look at it, but I believe that we laid that out because we had to have the two access points, and we didn't have the separation if I stuck a drive there. So I will look at it, though.
That's a good catch. We do have one person signed up to speak. Do we want to hear from our neighbor first, or any other further questions from commissioners? We have Gary Kofed. I'm sorry, I apologize.
Gary Kofed, 8425 Southwest 35th. We live just adjacent to these properties. First of all, I want to say thank for Mr. Grubbs. We've worked with him very well getting the PUD approved. What I want to do is address is the drainage concerns, and these are all going to be ongoing. And you pretty much discussed them in the last, last group, is, one, there's, we already have a lot of runoff. This will generate incremental runoff, and I understand that the existing pond there will probably be trying to be expanded to accommodate the runoff. But yet, there's uncontrolled runoff coming from the Kingsridge West, Winds West area that runs in. So you're kind of like a standstill. We showed when the PUD was approved, or the PUD approval, all of the flooding that we have. And what we're kind of asking is, just keep that in mind, and as you look for the, on this PUD, or this plan approval going forward, how can we get the homeowners' associations in the planned, new planned area, Buffalo, whatever it is, Buffalo Wall, how we get those guys to provide some kind of accommodation and assurances that they will maintain the pond? And in the Kingsridge West area, how can we get the city involved? Is, there is a drainage retaining pond there, a retaining area, does no good. The water flows right off Southwest 36th Street. It does not flow directly into the retaining areas. There is a, just a culvert there within the retaining area, but all water flows directly into that culvert, no retainage, and directly down into the creek. The other issue that we need to keep on, keep in our mind is protection of the water aquifer. We're on a water well adjacent to the property, very, very shallow, and we're very much concerned of surface, or surface contamination. I've talked to some hydrologists, yeah, that's a concern, it needs to be evaluated further. And the same way, since the reservoir is so shallow, any heavy excavation might, might still damage the reservoir. Other than that, we're all, I am in favor, you know, Mark going forward on his project. But we'd really like to be able to get involved, the other various city agencies that will be helping overseeing this, as well as the DEQ, the Water Resources Board, and the Corps of Engineers, just to make sure our neighborhood is all taken care of. And that's all I got to say.
Well, thank you very much, and it's good to hear the, the working relationship, Mark, and appreciate your efforts with that. I think based on our study session, maybe DEQ might not be my first call, but they'll, but I definitely think we should bring all of the resources we can with the city to answer any questions that you have. Other questions, comments from commissioners? I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a move to approve to City Council, C 7573. Oh, okay. Okay, well, I was wondering, I do think we need to add the TE that Commissioner Claire brought up about pedestrian walkway.
Oh, yeah. Mm-hmm. So the motion is to move, you're moving approval of C 7573, also requiring a pedestrian connection. How should we read, how should we phrase that?
I said, add a pedestrian connection internally from the duplex to the single-family lots.
Excellent. The motion is to approve of C 7573, subject to the addition, to the current technical evaluations, and adding the additional pedestrian walkway as read into the record. And that motion is seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you. We're in line for Item 19.
Item 19 is KC 7561, preliminary plat of Coventry Park, located south of East Memorial Road and east of North Midwest Boulevard, and variance to Section 5.3.1.1.5 of the subdivision regulations.
Thank you. Are they ready?
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, from behalf of the applicant. Mr. Jeff Van Hoos, who is also here, as well as Tim Johnson and Mark Zitza with Johnson and Associates, who is the civil engineering firm for this project. So what is before you is a preliminary plat of Coventry Park. I've got two separate plats displayed here, and the reason being, this is a plat of Arcady Heights. This is a plat that this planning commission approved just a couple of years ago on this exact piece of dirt for a different developer. What we're proposing here is very similar, except we are willing to impose more restrictions than the planning commission required back then. If you will recall, Mr. Chair, at the zoning hearing for this, a planning commission as well as City Council, there was a statement made by you, as well as Councilwoman Nice, that she wanted two acre lots on the south. Now, it's not a PUD. It is just straight RA, and my client acquired this parcel without knowledge of that. But in keeping with those promises that were made, a two acre, two acre lots were put in the old plat that you were, that you approved, and then if you look at what we propose, we have once again put two acre lots on the south. Now, what we have added is a 40-foot tree buffer on that southern line. If you could go to the aerial, there is significant tree cover here. We had a meeting with the neighbors, it was either last week or the week before, and they were very adamant that they wanted a 40-foot tree buffer. We are, we are willing to grant them that. The other thing that my client is willing to do that's going to provide a benefit not only for his future customers, but also the neighbors, he is going to build an eight-foot masonry wall along the turnpike boundary. The mall, the wall will slightly turn that corner, so provide sound abatement. So eight-foot masonry wall along the northern edge of our property, up against the southern edge of the turnpike right-of-way. Again, we think that is mutually beneficial, not proposed, and this one, we are willing to commit to that. So briefly, if you look at the TE's, we are in agreement with all of the TE's. We do need the variance on TE 3. The reason for the variance, this will be a private gated community. So private streets, built to city standards, but gated community, oftentimes the commission grants those variances because it is gated. We don't want stubs to, a potential non, you know, gated neighborhood. So I don't believe we have any issues as it relates to fire code. This developer has a long history of developing neighborhoods just like this that have heavy tree cover, and has done so very well, and maintained many, many trees. His goal is the same here. The neighborhood meeting we had was frankly fairly short and pleasant. Their main point of contention was making sure we had the two acre lots on the south, which, again, we have, and the 40-foot tree buffer, which we're prepared to read a new TE into the record that would require it. I'll just go ahead and read it. Tree preservation easements shown on the final plat shall be maintained by each individual lot owner. The purpose and intent of the easement is to protect the natural habitat and existing tree canopy from further encroachment by leaving the area in its natural condition. Undergrowth may be maintained so long as the existing tree canopies are preserved. Enforcement shall be managed through the City of Oklahoma City and Coventry Park covenants, conditions, and restrictions to prevent any elimination of healthy/mature trees. The lot owner shall have the right to remove dead, fallen, or red cedar and cottonwood trees if so desired. Now, the attorney for the protesters has asked that we grant these neighbors an easement across these lots. That is a massive step too far. I think you are inviting title issues, you're inviting all kinds of problems to grant an easement on a future lot owner to people outside of the plat. I've never seen anyone do that. It's a massive step too far. Frankly, what we're offering through this TE, I think, is the strongest bit of tree preservation language that any plat has offered, this planning commission. So we would offer the tree preservation language, as well as a sound wall, as the TE numbers seven and eight. In fact, we were still negotiating as of today, Mr. Work didn't like some of the language, so he requested a modification of the last sentence, which we agreed to, which is reflected in the piece of paper I handed out. So I do see that it's here, I'm not sure what he's going to say at this point, given we conceded to, you know, the provision that he asked us for. But it's zoned RA, it's zoned RA, not in a PUD, but straight RA. So we exceed what would be required for RA, because we do have the two acre lots on the south. We are providing a sound wall, and we are providing a 40-foot tree preservation area along the south. So with that, happy to answer any questions. We'd ask for your approval.
Thank you. Could you address, David, in your tree preservation language, we were having a discussion, I was having a discussion with council, your language about enforcement shall be managed through the City of Oklahoma City?
Sure. So the complaint lodged by Mr. Work was that there, there's no teeth to it if it's a self-regulating provision, although I disagree with that. It would be on the face of the plat, it would be able to be enforced by the HOA, because it'll also be a provision within the CCNRs. But this was a way to get another agency, for lack of a better word, the ability to monitor and ensure that that provision is adhered to.
I question our ability to put that requirement on the city. I don't know, Susan, if you want to address that?
Well, we would prefer it to be to the homeowners' association, it'd be a private, it'd be shown on the plat, it'd be a private easement that the homeowners' association would enforce, so that kind of takes us out of having to go out there and try to manage how many trees are out there and all that kind of stuff. Generally, the plat notes or this type of thing on a plat would be enforced by the homeowners' association.
So we're fine with that. Again, the complaint was, if it's someone, if it's not someone other than these lot owners or this HOA, it's really, I think the word was window dressing, which I think is incorrect. If it's in the covenants, if it's in the plat note, it's a legally enforceable item. I would disagree with council that things on plat notes aren't able to be maintained by the city. If that's the case, why does the city ask us to do things like tree preservation? If they really believe it's just a hollow gesture, well, perhaps we need to stop asking for it, then.
I mean, I think that's a valid point, too, but I can let Kelly speak for himself about what he thinks that we need. Any questions from commissioners?
And I do want to be clear, like, we're happy for the city. It is a step too far to grant a random grouping of neighbors outside of this plat the ability to monitor and enforce what's happening here. That has never happened on any plat, any zoning that I've ever been a part of.
Yeah, well, I got a couple things. I think, I agree with the applicant's representative. I think the granting the easement to the neighbors, that's just, no, not a good idea. Regarding the tree easement, I like it. I'm curious why it's not any different than a utility easement or drainage easement that the city oversees?
Yeah.
Well, council may have some other concerns, but the city isn't set up right now, doesn't have staff or budget to do any kind of forest, well, limited amount of forestry management, and mostly that's contained in the parks and recs. So there's, there's really no setup operationally to handle that sort of thing, you know? So what if, what if somebody cuts down trees and, well, it's available, whether it's diseased or not, there's a whole host of issues that the city isn't set up to do. So mostly, it's operational, and while we are looking into doing a tree preservation ordinance, we're not there yet, and it'll be some time before we do get there. So it's both code and lack of code, really, outside of this proposal, but an additional kind of how would we enforce that as the city, operationally and from a staffing and budgeting standpoint?
I don't see any reason why we couldn't give the city explicitly that authority. Now, your ability to execute it is certainly not within our purview, but we, but mandating it, I think, is, is within our purview, our legislative purview. So to me, it seems appropriate to say that the city will do the enforcing. I don't know, again, their ability to execute it is, is not within our authority.
Right. The only thing I would also add, that like, if it's a tree preservation granted to the city, we could still have some- we could still have some liability, even though, I mean, there could still be liability issues.
So I guess what I'd ask then, when staff is consistently asking for tree preservation, what does staff believe the appropriate mechanism is to do that?
To enforce that, yeah.
Because that has brought on almost every client I have, this idea of tree preservation. So what is staff's belief as to the enforcement mechanism?
I think it's, it's the same, and there, up to this point, and it came up recently, it, it has been, as, as council said, an HOA. So it would be on the plat, and it's enforced by the HOA.
Which we're fine with that.
Any other questions, comments? Is saying, you know, Coventry Park can, covenants, conditions and restrictions, is that an accurate way of saying the HOA is responsible for enforcing it? Because the, the CCNRs don't do the enforcing. They make the statement, right? So is this language still need to be revised to be, to place that responsibility specifically on an HOA so that they have a phone number and these neighbors can call them to, to say if they have a concern?
So it'll be twofold. It'll be on the face of the plat itself, and then there will be a provision within the CCNRs as well.
And so the CCNRs say the HOA shall enforce these conditions?
Correct.
David, it's essentially a common area, right, what we're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, essentially, you can't build anything there. We have, in addition to the 40-foot buffer, we have a 50-foot building line. So yes, it basically just becomes a buffer.
I mean, but it's not common area because, I mean, technically...
Correct. It'll be in, it'll be owned by a lot owner, but it becomes dead space for them, but for the tree line.
Why don't we, why don't we hear from, from Mr. Work? Thank you, David.
Good afternoon. Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, my name is Kelly Work, and I am here representing 23 residents of the Rock Springs neighborhood, which is the area located immediately to the south of the subject property. My address is 105 North Hudson, Suite 304. I'm also representing the Rock Springs Property Owners Association. The Rock Springs area, as you can see from the exhibit, is comprised of larger lots, approximately five acres or larger. It's an existing residential neighborhood. The, when this property is the subject of this Coventry Park preliminary plat, when it was rezoned, as has been referenced, back in 2020, there were certain commitments that were made that were to be implemented at the time of the plating. And so this plat has now been amended. This application has now been amended to reflect the commitment to provide two acre lots along the south boundary. So that's not how it was proposed when the application was filed. But it does now reflect the two acre lots along the south boundary, which is what was committed to back in 2020. So we, that was a primary concern of ours, and, and we do appreciate that that amendment has now been made to reflect that. The, with respect to this, to the 40-foot tree preservation buffer that is proposed as part of this preliminary plat, that is being put in place to provide a buffer from, for the Rock Springs neighborhood, which is to the south, the larger lots to the south. So it is really being done for the benefit of, of that area. This is a heavily forested area of Oklahoma City. The, there certainly is a recognition that where possible, we want to encourage tree preservation. And our concern, of course, about having the tree preservation buffer be put in place is that we need for it to be meaningful. And in order for it to be meaningful, it needs to be lasting, and it needs to be enforceable. And we will not have the ability to enforce it because we're not going to be a part of the Coventry Park addition. We're not going to be part of their private covenants and restrictions. So we would ask, and as Mr. Box referenced, we did have input with him about this proposed plat note, which he has read. And we would ask that you include that, that you accept that plat note to be reflected on this preliminary plat and on the final plat once it gets to that stage. That includes the language that has been proposed. Along with the, the, having the tree preservation 40-foot easement area designated on preliminary plat as it, as it is now shown, you can see it's just designated as a line. It's referenced in the, in the plat notes, and that it does say it's a 40-foot tree preservation easement. So in order for that to be meaningful, we need it to be enforceable, and we need it to be lasting. And so that will require some participation, in our view, by the city. If, which we think can be accomplished through this note on the plat with the language that has been agreed to. The, the, the concern, the difficulty, of course, with relying on it being just a private homeowners association issue is that the owners within Coventry Park can choose not to enforce it. They can choose to amend it. They can choose to eliminate it. And we would not have the ability to have any say in that. And so in order for it to be lasting, in order for it to endure and be enforceable, we would ask that you include the language on the plat in this proposed plat note, in addition to having it reflected, as the application does today, that there is a 40-foot tree preservation easement along the southern boundary. So with that, and along with the, we also appreciate the applicant's agreement to provide the eight-foot masonry wall along the northern boundary. That is one of the points that we ask them to address because with the removal of the trees in that area, we think it will be necessary for there to be some sound attenuation from the turnpike. And we're hopeful that that wall will, will accomplish that. But this, this idea of encouraging tree preservation in this area of Oklahoma City, which is heavily forested, we need some support for that in order to make that be lasting and to endure. And so we would encourage you to include the plat note language as has been proposed. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Thank you, Kelly. So you, we're, we're united then. You, both sides are united on this exact language, correct?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. I have no questions. I guess I'll, if council has questions.
Well, no, I would just, I have not seen that language in, right, until now. So we have not had a chance to look at it and to weigh in on how that would be enforced and whether or not we would want to take on that responsibility, so.
It's a preliminary plat.
Yeah. So I would say, yeah, subject to our review and agreement at final plat.
Okay. I'm, I'm good with that. I would say, I, my own very, very limited legal analysis is, well, if we give you that authority, it's up to you to decide whether you can enforce it. The point is, we gave you the authority to be able to do it. And so I, but I, we can address that later. We're going to have a final plat at some point. We do have other people signed up to speak, and so we should hear from them as well, unless there are questions from commissioners, before we do that. And I will tell our neighbors, it sounds like the neighbors are represented, the immediate neighbors are represented by council, who are in support of this plat. First, we have Kirk Whitman.
Thank you. Kirk Whitman, 13901 North Midwest Boulevard. I feel like I'm getting to be a regular up here.
You are. I was about to say, you just, do we need to get you a parking space, Kirk?
I wish I could put in a bid to get the hearings a little quicker, like, you know, maybe the third or fourth up instead of at five or six o'clock, like you guys. Anyway, this, you all know my argument. It just has to do with septic systems on three-quarters of an acre. It has to do with drainage. It has to do with the lake. It has to do with the density. It has to do with the consistency of 28 years without a one-acre lot being approved. And unfortunately, two, two years, three years ago, this was approved. To RA1, I assume, and it should have been medium, and it should have followed the staff's recommendation. But things happened. It was approved. The comprehensive plan called for two acres or 50 lots on 100 acres. I mean, average of two acres each. Well, they're going for a lot more than that. There's about 10 lots on the north side of this property that are 1.03 acres. And that assumes that the right-of-way does not come through for the state, for the turnpike authority, which I'm told is going to, but that's not done yet. But that's going to be 50 to 100 feet. That'll reduce these lots down to like 0.6, 0.68, 0.7 acres if they come in and this lot, if this is approved as it is. I don't know how you adjust for that. I don't know where you're going to put the wall until you know exactly where they're going to put the turnpike. But I, I can guarantee you, it's 50 to 100 feet, depending on the terrain, is what they'll encroach. It's not done yet. They haven't bought the right-of-way. I'm just telling you, I've talked to them. That's what's going to happen. So you're going to have to figure out where that wall's going to go. And that'll also reduce those lots on the north end. So I don't know how you adjust for that. It's a lot of 0.75 acre lots if they do that. Right now, it's one acre. My preference would be two acres for every one of these out here. I think it's, I applaud them for putting two acres on the south side. I applaud them for the trees. That's all, that's all great. They're 150-foot wide lots on the north. Septic systems, they're not going to work on 150 feet. I mean, it's going to go downhill, obviously, like we've talked about before. You know, they say the water supply is not going to be affected. I've heard a couple of you all say that. The water supply has shrunk. The state's going into an eradication of cedars because they take so much groundwater every day. Just read it in the paper. So the water supply may be affected. The more houses we get out here on water wells, I had to deepen mine to almost 200 feet. It's going to affect us. The first deal was approved, 66 lots. I knew nothing about it, and none of my neighbors knew anything about it, but it was approved. Then a few years later, somebody sells the property. Now they want 80, 80 lots. What happens if you approve this 80 lots, and then they sell it, and a guy comes in and wants 100 lots, one acre lots, all 100 of them? I mean, where do you stop? I mean, you've approved 66 lots, which I would have never done, but I'm not on the commission. But to go to 80, and then who knows, who knows what the, I just don't know where you stop. Where do you stop? Once you've approved RA1, where do you stop amending? You got a bite of the apple two, three years ago, nobody was here to protest? Well, that I know of. And now he wants another bite of the apple to get more. Who's going to get the third bite of the apple and go more? I don't know how you stop it. I'm just, I'm posing a question to you guys. Last thing is, I'm concerned about the water. I'm concerned about Lake Arcadia. If it was me, I would get, stick with the two acre lots or go with the 66, even though I think what they're proposing with the two acres and the buffer, it's, that's a magnificent thing. It's a, it's a good thing. So it sounds like they're trying to work it out. I just, I can't see getting another bite of the apple and increasing and increasing and increasing the number of lots. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Kirk.
Thank you.
Next, we have Gypsy Hogan.
Hello. I live in the cross timbers area, and I'm here on behalf of the trees. And I say that, if you look at that map, your plat map, you'll see that this is a really wooded area. And if you went out there today, you could get lost on that acreage. A 40-foot perimeter of trees. I've been sitting there counting these two-foot tiles. This area right here is about 32 feet. You can see the difference between an area like that, that you could get lost in. You're going to be able to see from one side to the other. So you're sitting here arguing over how to protect a little bitty strip of trees. And if you doubt the importance of these, go back to your own Plan OKC that mentions the preservation of the cross timbers as being important to our city's future. It's an ecological area. It's, it's different than what you have been working in for years when you go northwest and southwest. This development is like a normal development that's been done for years. Your Plan OKC recommends that they, when you go out to areas like this, you cluster your houses so you can preserve a greater area. I mean, forget the 40 feet. Let's preserve 200 feet in any direction by putting these houses together, smaller areas. It's a different type of development. And your subdivision regulations ask that you look at that comprehensive plan, that you look at your OKC plan and its recommendations when you're making these decisions. So I urge you to put on a different headset and think differently about the developments in this area. And if you doubt the importance of it, I did a little deal. I'm about 15 minutes to downtown today. When I left my house, my car temperature showed 91 degrees. By the time I got downtown, it was 99 degrees. That's eight degrees difference in 15 miles. You know what the difference is? I'm in a treed area. Those trees make a difference. We all know this. We read and see the news every night, and yet, we're not thinking about it in those terms. So I urge you to please think about that when you look at this plat.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan. I will do my best to address some of, some of those issues. Number one, I think the tree preservation question is an important one. I think the, as has been discussed today, our bill, our city's ability to enforce the tree preservation ordinances, I think, is an important topic of discussion for the future. Certainly, that is important as we consider those developments. And so I appreciate you mentioning that. I will say to Kirk, with regard to your concern of how many times is it going to keep getting brought up? Until you own it, Kirk, we're going to deal with property owners who decide that they're going to keep coming back to us, and will have the right inherently to request whatever they want for the property they own. This commission does not have the authority to put a moratorium on proposals for future development. So as much as it would make our agenda much lighter if we could just say, no more, no more applications, we don't have that authority. And so as long as you live in an appealing area, which you do, that is beautiful, you're going to have people who want to come build stuff here, in, in that area. And that's just a consequence of living in a great place. Our job here is to find a way to make the development as compatible as possible. So that is a challenge. To your point about, about septic systems, we had a study session today. You would have thoroughly enjoyed, well, maybe not enjoyed it, but you would have been glad to hear the information that we heard today. I can tell you, it was eye-opening about the, our lack of regulations with regard to septic systems is a significant concern. And I promise you that every commissioner that was there to hear it shares that concern. Unfortunately, we're far down the road on this development, but there are ordinances in this city need to change. The laws of this state need to change with regard to the regulation of septic systems, with its proximity to water wells. All of those things need to be addressed. And I think you'll see some work in the future, at least on our behalf, to start having those conversations about how we can regulate that better with our limited powers as a commission. So once again, not a good answer to your question, but it is at least an improvement from your previous times of being here, asking for those issues to be addressed. I appreciate the effort that's been made by council on both sides of this issue to try to reach a peaceful resolution. I think we're in the best place we can get, and so I'm in, in support of where we are. Are there any questions, comments from commissioners?
I really appreciate what Ms. Hogan had to say about tree preservation. I second those. And that was another topic we covered today, which was, how can we move more, you know, closer to what adjacent states like Texas do? And urban forestry is just a part of the process there. When you get a project approved, they got to tag trees. And I hope we can get there, but we're not there today.
Agreed. Other questions or comments? I cannot make a motion, but I am in support.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve item C 7561, subject to technical evaluations. Adding technical evaluation eight regarding tree preservation as provided by the two councils and technical evaluation eight regarding the sound wall.
We need a, the variance on TE3.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
All right.
So first, we'll take the variance. Motion to approve the variance to section 5.3.1.1D. Point five of the subdivision regulations.
The Commissioner Claire moves to approve the variance to section 5.3.1.1D. Point five of the subdivision regulations. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Commissioner Claire?
Move to approve the item C 7561, subject to its technical evaluations. And the new technical evaluation seven and eight is read into the record.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve of C 7561 to city, not to city council, moves to approve of C 7561, including all six listed technical evaluations and adding technical evaluation seven as read into the record regarding tree preservation and tree, and technical evaluation eight regarding a sound wall, also as read into the record. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 20 has been continued. I'm actually going to ask that we take just a few minutes of a two-minute break before we hear our final item. Thank you. Let's come back to order and we'll begin with consideration of item 21.
Item 21 is S P U D 1535, application to, oh, sorry, lost my place, to rezone 415 Northwest Fifth Street from D B D Downtown Business District to S P U D 1535.
David Box, my quick to. All cord drive. Here on behalf of the applicant, Ms. Sherry Blair, who's also here with us. So what is before you is an S P U D to allow the outdoor component of a doggy daycare. I think it's an important piece of the story to walk through briefly the history of my client's interaction with the city, because it's only after she was given assurances that she engaged in a 10-year lease and took out a sizable loan from the bank to go build out this space, because she had had both verbal and written assurances from the city that it was allowed. So I've handed you three documents. The first document you see, and I've highlighted it, but it's a building permit that was issued by the city on May 6th, 2020. And if you look down under land use code, and I've highlighted that piece, the land use code that was granted to my client on May 6th, 2020 was 8300.10. If you flip the page, you will see the definition from the municipal code of 8300.10, animal sales and services, kennels, and veterinary general. As you move your way down, you see exterior animal enclosures and dog runs permitted. So my client, after getting a building permit, expressly authorizing her to have this use with exterior animal enclosures and dog runs permitted, then moved forward to the next piece, that third page, and that is a fence permit. There was allegations made at the V D R C that my client never got a fence permit. Well, if you look online now, it says that it wasn't issued. But this is the email from OKC. It's the noreply@okc.gov. And its date is September 29th, 2020. The fence permit application has been reviewed and approved. So she received approval from her building permit. She received approval for her fence permit to fence in the outdoor area and began operating. She was then told, we made a mistake. You actually don't have that use allowed. We got involved. We met with staff. Staff said, well, if they're on leashes, it's an allowed use. So great, that's fine. We can operationally require leashes. So she went about her business with leashes. Sometime after that, more complaints came in and she was told, oh, sorry, we made another mistake. You can't have leashes. It's just, we can't have the use period. I said, okay. So how, how was Midtown Vets operating? Because they're zoned D T D 1, just like us. How is the Ninth Street Barking Lodge operating? Because they are zoned D T D 1, just like us. How is the outdoor dog park in the middle of Midtown permitted? It's zoned D T D 1, just like us. And there's an OU Vet Clinic with outdoor runs around Reno and Walker, also zoned in the exact same manner. What we were told is, we made mistakes on those two. Specifically, the Ninth Street Barking Lodge was granted an impermissible use variance. Some of you have had the pleasure of sitting on Board of Adjustment. Know that Board of Adjustment hears special exceptions. It hears variance applications. It doesn't hear use-related matters other than the specific Airbnb stuff. But in terms of whether or not to authorize a use, that is a legislative function reserved to recommendations by Planning Commission and ultimately approval or denial by city council. Well, the Ninth Street Barking Lodge, lucky for them, was granted an illegal use variance. So that's how they're operating. So there is use after use after use downtown, zoned the exact same manner as us, that the city has just accidentally made mistakes and continues to operate. My client is trying to seek relief to allow her operation to continue because she is heavily invested in this at this point, all on the assurances issued by Oklahoma City that her use was allowed. Now, the staff, in an effort to try to make this more compatible, has a series of TEs, one of which is a maximum of four dogs shall be allowed outside. My client can agree to that. My client can limit the number of dogs that would be allowed outside. You know, in talking to someone, they, they had an interesting point. If you think about what is allowed downtown, single-family residential is allowed downtown. You could build townhomes. You could build homes. You can have four dogs. In fact, I think Commissioner Powers has four dogs. You can have four dogs. You could put those four dogs in your backyard, and those dogs could bark. And there's nothing you can do. So the four dog max, which is what is allowed in a single-family home, I think is what staff is trying to get to, to try to make this more compatible with the use that is allowed. We're happy to agree to that. We're happy to answer any questions. My client is here. I'd love for you to be able to hear from her as well, just to get her perspective. We're also open to other ideas. My client comes to you humbly trying to find a path forward on a situation that I don't believe is her fault. And I, I don't think I'm just saying that. I think the issuance of various building permits and fence permits from the city of Oklahoma City is making my point. Happy to answer any questions.
A couple of things. So the building permit was issued. You've got the permit to issue the fence. Help me understand. So when, so help me understand when the city told you that you could, that, that your client could no longer operate. Help me understand that process.
So after, so after this, my client went forward on the necessary permits to install the sign. And because it's D T D, it requires a C A rather than just a building permit. And so that's when she started meeting with, with Laura Griggs on the sign. Laura is the first one from the city that caught it to say, actually, this is not allowed. She informed somebody within building permit that, hey, you made a mistake. I believe that person said, well, I'll just go change it in the system. To Laura's credit, she said, well, no, you need to let them know that this has happened. You can't just go change it in the system and make this use now illegal. Like, you, they have a duty to let them know that we made the mistake. I believe that, that person did that. But Laura Griggs, through the sign permit for the use, is how it first got to us.
So the existing, the existing zoning does not include 8300.10, but somehow?
Despite all of those uses that exist in downtown. Correct.
Yeah. Okay. I think I understand that. I know that we, do we have, do, does anybody from the city want to say anything with regard to that, those events and respond to those events?
And after that, if you, if you allow, my client would like to say just a few words.
Please.
Okay.
Susan, did you have any comments?
I have, Sherry Blair. I'm the owner of The Dog House. And I just kind of want to start with a little bit of history. 10 years ago, I pursued a doggy daycare in northwest Oklahoma City at MacArthur and Northwest Expressway. I did have to rezone that building. I have a, I share a fence with a residential neighborhood. I have a Jimmy's Egg on one side. I have a shopping center on the other, apartments behind me. So I did have to have that rezoned, no problem. We've never had a complaint there. So it was actually in 2017, I started to pursue another location. And when I started to pursue another location, it was all based on a need for a doggy daycare. So I just want to share some current numbers with you. I looked at current numbers way back then, but current numbers right now, in 2023, Oklahoma is number nine in the United States in pets per household. 48% of Oklahomans, Oklahoma households have dogs. Now, if you start to look at just Midtown and Downtown, there's approximately 5,700 households in Midtown, Downtown. And if 48% of them have dogs, then that'd mean there's 2,759 dogs in this area. So, you know, clearly, and just a few more facts here, 76% of millennials in the United States own dogs. So between Midtown and Downtown, there's approximately 13,877 residents, and the average age is 31 to 34. So clearly, the need in Midtown, Downtown for a doggy daycare is definitely there. So I started. So I start pursuing the fact, and in 2019, and I don't want to repeat anything David has said here, so I'm not, I'm going to skip some of this, but in 2019, I looked at 415 Northwest Fifth. Now, from my previous experience at my northwest location, I knew questions to ask about zoning outdoor areas. My first two questions always, always is, is there an outdoor area? Is it zoned properly? So we immediately walked over to 420 West Main, talked to David Cunningham, and he assured me that yes, it is zoned properly. And then that's kind of where we start with where David gets into, that then I pursued. From there, I pursued a, the lease and SBA loan. Neither one of those can happen without a building permit. So I got the building permit, the same one that he was showing you. I presented it to my landlords. I presented it to the bank. We were off and running, and I demoed the inside of the building to start the construction. And it was actually on June 1, I think, I received the call from James Kirk that told me that there was a mistake that was made. And then I was told to call Laura Griggs, and I called her, and pretty much then what David said there. So, but basically, if I can, yeah, I just want to address the four dogs outside. First, I want to talk a little bit about the veterinarians, what they say about outdoors. If dogs don't receive daily doses of outdoor stimulation, they can get restless and develop behavioral problems. They will be lacking in vitamin D, which is essential for bone health. Even outdoor sniffing is essential for the dog's well-being. So there's a great need for the dogs to be outdoors. If I do four dogs outdoors, if we are working at capacity at The Dog House, if a dog were to come at 7:00 a.m. when we open and leave at 6:00 p.m., we close at 6:30, but let's just say they leave at 6:00 p.m., and I was doing a four-dog rotation, that would mean that dog would get to be outside for approximately five minutes the entire day. We have a lot of half-day clients. If they come, more than likely, their dog is never going to get outside. My biggest, one of my biggest concerns is when our clients, if you're looking for a doggy daycare for health, you, you know, you've got a doggy daycare here that may or may not allow your dog to be outside. You've got a doggy daycare over here, less than a mile away, that they can be outside all day long. Well, I'm going to lose my existing clients, and I'm certainly not going to get any new clients. So I'm extremely concerned for the growth of my business, number one. I am a little bit confused about the letters that you have received of opposition. One gentleman states that the dogs are barking because of the people that hang out, smoking weed, drinking beer, whiskey, gambling, loitering, and selling illegal drugs. 100% agree that that is what goes on in that area. I'm wondering, because there are other opposing letters that state that they're losing rental property because of the dogs barking. I'm just wondering if they're losing rental property because of this instead of the dogs barking. I don't know who's to say. Someone mentioned that the dogs are barking, go against the peace and tranquility of the neighborhood. Well, that's contradicting what the other one said. I don't think that's tranquility when there's gambling, loitering, selling drugs. I'm not sure if the definition of urban living even really kind of fits into the peace and tranquility. I mean, urban living isn't really meant to be peace and, well, I mean, I guess it can be, but. They also mentioned the dogs barking at night. I don't know whose dogs are barking at night. Our playgroups go in at 5:30. We open backup at 7:00, so I don't know whose dogs are barking in the middle of the night. They have also presented some numbers to you about potential loss of rental income. But I would like to present some facts to you about loss of income for me. If I am not allowed to stay open, I will have to declare bankruptcy, which means that my landlords will lose $616,000. Bank First will lose $250,000. I will lose my house, because I put my house up for collateral for the loan. But, you know, I, for me, it's not really about, it is about the money, but it's also about trying to be a part of downtown. The number-one relationship that I feel like you all might be interested in is, that we have developed, is with Palomar. Domestic violence victims will not leave their situations, because they don't want to leave their dogs. So Palomar allows them to surrender their dogs to Palomar. If Palomar cannot find a foster, then they will board them at The Dog House. I do not charge them for that. We keep them up to three to four months until the victims can find safe housing. We're very involved with Midtown Business Alliance. We provide them with dog treats, anything they need for all their dog events. So basically, what I'm saying is, Ninth Street Barking Lot is in the downtown because of a mistake. The Dog House is in downtown because of a mistake. But maybe we're not really there because of a mistake. Maybe we're supposed to be serving the residents with 2,700 dogs. So that's what I would like to continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I need questions?
Any questions, Commissioners?
Do you have outdoor space?
I'm sorry, do you have outdoor space at the facility on Northwest Expressway and MacArthur?
Mm-hmm. It's just north of, it's just north of Northwest Expressway on MacArthur.
I know where it is. But where's your outdoor space?
I'm sorry?
Where is your outdoor space at that facility?
Oh, it's behind it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's basically the same concept I did here. I took part of the parking lot and covered it and made the outdoor space, closed, enclosed it. So it's the same, same concept.
Okay.
What's your current occupancy or capacity, I guess, for the number of dogs you can serve at any one time? Like, what's your maximum?
In the facility downtown?
Mm-hmm, currently.
Um, now, currently, because we've only been open about two and a half years, so we're still growing. So right now, we currently have about 40 dogs in the facility. Capacity would be around 70.
Okay.
Because it's a 7,700-square-foot building. Yeah.
Okay. I guess I have a question for the city. So I'm not sure who the right person is to answer my question. Why was this building permit rescinded, and why haven't the other ones been rescinded? What is the legal mechanism that allows you to rescind this but not rescind the other ones?
Well, I think the, the one that he's speaking about that was granted the variance, there was a different interpretation at that time. I guess it's whether or not that was a use variance or not. That was granted 10 years ago, so I don't think that we have any type of way that we could go back and try to revoke a variance that was granted by the Board of Adjustment 10 years ago, and these people have already, you know, have a vested interest.
So why is, so why is her interest not considered a vested interest? And we'll get into, this is before I even address compatibility. I think there are significant compatibility issues, but I'm not understanding this legal mechanism. She clearly committed to revising her building. She's got a vested financial interest. Explain to me why the city has the ability to rescind this at this stage.
Well, I think it's just because we don't believe that you can give a use variance. We think it's illegal, so I don't know how I can make it. I mean, they're going through the right mechanism to make it right by getting a rezoning. I think that's the only option at this point. It may have to be litigated later. So I don't think we can just allow them to have this use now that it is, that in our belief is a use variance. I can't happen, I can't help what happened 10 years ago through the Board of Adjustment, but.
I, yeah, I fail to see the distinction there. It's just a time thing.
Yeah, that's...
I mean, is that really it? It's just, that was longer ago than this was?
I think probably. I mean, it was 10 years ago they've been operating. I, I'm not, I don't know when the, you know, there's, I'm not, I don't know the facts, and I think that'll have to, I don't think they're relevant to what we're talking about as far as the zoning and whether or not it's appropriate use or not. But as far as when she knew, how long, you know, there's different fact, I guess, disputed facts in that, on when she knew. It was changed, you know, in the Exela on June 2, which is apparently when they told her, and the permit was issued in May 6. So I don't know how much, you know, she had expended at that point, you know, which was just less than a month, or approximately a month. So, I don't know. I just, I think that the issue here is whether or not this is a reasonable use of the property. They are seeking to make it right by the mechanism that I think is appropriate, which is the zoning, rezoning the property. And then it's up to the commission to determine whether or not this is a, an appropriate use for the land, depending upon, you know, the mitigation factors that they've put in their spud.
I guess what the, my line of questioning is getting at that very issue, which is, is this the appropriate remedy? And I guess I'm unsatisfied by the answer that, and it's not your fault. I'm not blaming you specifically, so don't, I'm challenging the entire system.
Right.
Because the fact that you could get a loan, get a building permit, make renovations, invest hundreds of thousands of your own dollars, put your own property at risk, and then the city can just automatically rescind that with no other legal mechanism for you to be able to recover your rights? There's something inherently wrong about that. What I also have a problem with is thinking that rezoning is the, that we're the appropriate venue to resolve a financial dispute, which I think is highly inappropriate for this commission to be doing so. That's why I'm asking those questions, because this does not seem, I'm, this is not right.
One, and this is just my understanding of the facts. So when this came in, my understanding is that the outdoor portion of the use was not shown on the site plan. So even if they had been, you know, given the appropriate use, 8300.11, you know, they, there was obviously a mistake, but I don't know that it was fully understood what exactly was going to be happening when, when this came in for a building permit. I was just told that it wasn't shown on the site plan, that they were going to have the outdoor section. So, you know, there, there is that. It's, you know, I think, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, the fact is we come back to if zoning, changing the zoning can be a remedy, because it would allow that kind of subuse to happen.
But to that point, though, of course, the staff knew what was happening in September 29, when they issued a fence permit. And so many months later, the city once again issued a permit to enclose the outdoor area via the fence permit.
But did the fence permit, I mean, fence permits are usually applied for by a fence contractor, and they don't have to, it's very limited information to get a fence permit.
It was a fence contractor, in the middle of a parking lot.
But does it say? Would that have triggered the use conversation to get a fence permit? Because what's, what's being fenced isn't really something that they scrutinize.
I don't know, because the, the use conversation was had in May via the issuance of a building permit.
And I believe there's still some issues as to the fence permit. There was, it was never called in for an inspection on the fence permit, so.
Yeah.
Which, which they tell them to call in for the inspection.
It was revoked.
Once it's completed. So the fence permit is still pending.
So what's the remedy for...
But like I say, I think to me, that is, what is relevant here is that it is whether or not the use is appropriate for this location and for this zoning, and that's what they would try to do. Now, Mr. Box could have tried to go another route if he felt that there was, the zoning was not the appropriate route, and tried to go to the Board of Adjustment and try to do the same thing and try to convince them, but...
Well, no, because you and I both know.
Well, that's our opinion, but I mean...
Illegal, yet another applicant somehow was able to stand at this podium and convince at least three people, while no one said anything, that getting a variance to allow this use was the appropriate vehicle.
My, my question is, so what's the remedy for a neighbor of the dog park on Ninth and Oklahoma who, who I guess there's an illegal operation of a dog park happening? I'm a neighbor to that. Let's assume I'm a neighbor to that. What, what am I, what's my remedy at that point? I guess I'm trying to decide, why did the city decide that the person who should bear the brunt of this mistake should be the property owner instead of neighbors? Not saying that I think neighbors should endure that, but I'm just curious, because on one side of the city, they get to do that, and on this side, they can't. And I'm wondering why.
It is my understanding that the Ninth Street Barking Lodge has received complaints. The city has received complaints. It's right across the street from the Metropolitan. It's a massive, big, beautiful, brand-new, a brand-new five-something years old, apartment building, and there have been complaints lodged. And I think the response has been, well, they've received a variance to allow the use.
An illegal variance.
Yes.
Instead of requiring them to stop their operation and come back here and demand a rezon. It's an arbitrary decision, and it's, in my opinion, it's, it's wrong. And I'm, again, we can get into this debate, if, if, we can get into debate about, about appropriate use, but I, I question the form, that this is the, the appropriate form for us to resolve a legal dispute between a citizen that can't operate their business and the City of Oklahoma City. I mean, we have plenty of people signed up to speak, to, to speak to this. Commissioners, questions, thoughts?
Well, first of all, I 150% agree with your analysis of the situation. I have not heard anything yet that makes it make sense to me that one business is allowed to operate with any illegal variance, but this, this piece of property cannot proceed with an illegal variance. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to me. 10 years, 10 months, I don't see the difference. But I also agree that this may not be the venue for this dispute to be resolved. Nonetheless, we're here. So to bring all of that back to, as Ms. Randall suggests, the land use issues, what is it about this piece of property in terms of its proximity to other businesses, in terms of its proximity to residential properties, in terms of, you know, its zoning, base zoning? What is it about this property that makes it different from the other businesses that are operating as dog parks? Dog parks are problematic. They have dogs. Dogs bark. So why are they being permitted some places and not others? And let's, let's get it back to that.
I, I would add to that that, I, I'm, I agree with the, the other concerns, and these are all valid points, but it, there are so many details, and there's two sides to this, and there's a lot of information bouncing around out there, and I'm trying to focus on this case only that's, that's before us. And we have to consider existing established uses when considering compatibility. So if I'm focusing on that, based on this case, and what I'm hearing from all of the multitude of concerned neighbors, is that this does not appear to be a compatible use. And if we were deciding this today with no mistakes having been made in the past, I would struggle to, I, I wouldn't be able to get there on approving this use on that site. That's just my opinion. I'm speaking for myself here, but, and I want to hear from the neighbors. There may be more information that, that may help, but, and we make, also get to start to talk about possible solutions. You said you're open to alternatives, the applicant, so, you know, maybe we get into
Can we get a, just sort of a temperature? It's 5 o'clock. A temperature. I, my guess is we're, there's probably more consensus than, than we think. When we, when it comes to appropriateness, Commissioners that are on the fence, Commissioners that feel like this is an inappropriate use, I tend to think that this use is one that we should scrutinize significantly. The problem I have is, are we, I fear that we are, we are contributing... I fear that we are, we are, are contributing to a wrong that the city is perpetuating. And I know that we wouldn't be personally liable. I just haven't, I have a moral objection to that generally. I don't know if we'd have gotten, if we would have received this application, brand new, she hasn't signed a lease, she hasn't done any of these efforts and we're allowed to consider this like any other proposal, I could just vote no and just move on. And I would have no, I wouldn't feel bad about it at all. I don't, I, again, that's why I asked for like a straw poll here because I think most commission members probably agree with me that the appropriateness is not really there. But I have a real serious problem with us pursuing this and what we're doing to, to her in this, in this instance. So I guess from, on advice of counsel, I guess we need to just go back to the review of, of the appropriateness of this use. I think that neighbors, you'll find that this commission is very sensitive to your concerns. So I would encourage you, seeing the, the extreme number of people who would like to be heard on this issue. And we'll hear from you. I'd just say that I think if you can get to the point, because I think you have an audience that is, is sensitive to your concerns. But I, I feel at a loss. I feel like I'm handcuffed.
I have one question for staff and I'm a little fuzzy on the history of this, this site. But it did come to us, I recall, in 2020 when we were remote.
It did. I filed an S P U D. That is went through conversations with staff. We were told if you keep them on leashes, you don't need to rezone. We agreed, we'll just keep them on leashes. We can, from an operational standpoint, do that. And then we're told that won't work. So yes, there was a separate application that was pulled after we were.
We never approved anything.
Correct. We yanked it before I think it even got to a planning commission hearing.
So can the city be sued for this?
We can be sued for anything, I guess, you know.
I guess, can, can the city be found liable for this? We know it's a municipality. It's a government agency. So can they, can they actually be sued and, and for this, like successfully?
I'd rather not discuss arguments for potential lawsuits on the horseshoe.
Should we be briefed legally on the implications of this decision before moving forward? I mean, should we be at all, have more information about where the city stands? About, about how you deal with the other non-conform, non-illegal operations that have been given the same authority to move forward as this applicant? Should we receive any more information about that? Go ahead, Commissioner Powers. You're saying no.
Okay, this, this is, I will not say rough, a really, really, really tough case. Of all the cases that I have, you know, lost sleep over since I started doing this work, this might be it. The situation that this woman is in, the idea that I was, I'm doing anything to contribute to it is really, really way beyond distasteful. I mean, it's really, really difficult to swallow. But to be the cold-blooded lawyer that I am, I do not think that it is the job of this commission to rectify her situation or to resolve this dispute. And so if I come straight back to the flat land use of this case, it's really hard for me to see this as, and Mr. Box is right, I do have four dogs and I keep them in the house most of the time because I worry about how much they bark and the noise that they make and the disturbance they are to my neighbors. I agree that this site has a lot of other issues than just the dogs in terms of things that might be deterring rental of property and all that kind of stuff. There's a lot of other stuff going on there that may be causing some of that. But that also does not mean that her, the use of, of an outdoor dog run. And you've heard me talk about that with, you know, vets and on zoning cases. It's like barking dogs are a real, real nuisance. And, you know, you can't get away from them. There's nothing you can do about it. So I, you know, it's, it's really, really tough. But it's not so much the illegal uses in other places. It's really just the land use stuff. How they are more compatible with other places. Haven't done that full history. I haven't gone and looked at the other ones. I don't know exactly how they're related to other uses around them. And so why it's okay to have one here and not to have one here, I don't know. But when I look at this piece of property, when I look at this use of this site, I would have a really hard time voting yes for this if it were arriving in front of us cold today. So that's where I am. I really don't see how it is possible, and I'm, you know me, I'm willing to stretch things. But I, I just don't see how it is possible for us to stretch our responsibility and purview far enough to resolve this situation.
Which is an unfortunate outcome. We do have neighbors signed up to speak. Are you Michael Berryman?
Yes, I just wanted to suggest, I mean, we have a number of people here who have been working on this issue, researching it in different ways. They all have factual knowledge that I feel like the other side does not have. And we would want you to at least hear us out today because we're prepared. We're here. We've been sitting here for over three hours waiting to say our piece. My people have highly researched all these issues. They have facts. They have timelines. They have documents. And it will show that there is a much bigger picture than has been brought up by Mr. Box today. So we would just like to air that out today if for no other reason for you to have that factual knowledge.
Certainly. Well, you're, you're here. Michael Berryman, you're the first person signed up to speak. You have five minutes to address the commission.
Actually, I'm, actually, I'm not. There's someone else that should be, should be ahead.
Okay.
I'm Shawna Berryman. I office at 426 Northwest Fifth, directly across the street to the south of the doghouse. And I thank you for your time. There are several people anxious to respond to the comments that were made by Mr. Box, and I will try to keep my comments short. Contrary to what you might believe, because we are in opposition, we are not against dogs. We have had dogs or we have dogs. And we feel like there is a place where dog owners should be able to take their dogs for either daycare or a boarding facility. Our zip, our opposition comes from the fact that this location is not zoned for an outdoor dog run. Therefore, the dogs shouldn't be outside in this dog run. And because this is a downtown, a downtown business district with buildings surrounding the facility, the barking from the dogs bounces off the hard surfaces, amplifying their noise. And barking dogs, like you said, is not comparable to regular city noises. This business is not compatible with its neighbors. To illustrate the volume of people who have been impacted by this applicant, I'd just like to recognize the people that are here in opposition, if you wouldn't mind just standing. We have a video that we took from the roof of our building, which illustrates the magnitude of this problem. This was taken from a regular camera over the last four weeks at various times. There has been no enhancement to this video. I would ask you to notice a few things. At one point, there are two dogs that seem to be barking insistently at each other with no intervention whatsoever. At one point, one dog is barking at a handler. None of these dogs have leashes. The many times that we have looked out of our window for the past two and a half years, none of the dogs that are seen have been on leashes, which is contrary to what Mr. Box said in his presentation to the Downtown Design Review Committee on June the 15th, when he indicated the reason why they withdrew their spud in September of 2020 was because they learned that they could take the dogs out on leashes and stated that they would make an operational requirement. I would also ask you to notice that there are cages built inside the fenced area, which are against the rules of the code, the building code, which will be addressed by another opponent. And it is worth mentioning that if you have visited the doghouse and not heard barking, it is because they are not out there all the time, but three or four times throughout the day en masse. Finally, the Downtown Review Committee voted five to zero recommending denial of this spud, and I would ask you to do the same. And here's the video.
And just for the record, you have two minutes left for us to be able to watch the video.
The comments certainly seem to indicate that.
Time, that's the time. Thank you. Next, we have Michael Berryman. Do you want to go next or?
Yes.
And you have five minutes to address the commission.
Michael Berryman, 426 Northwest Fifth. And I'd, I'd first just like to ask, that's, that's a five-minute video and it, it shows the magnitude of the problem. We would just respectfully ask that we take three more minutes of your time for you to see the whole thing because it's instrumental in this four-dog approach that's been suggested. You saw two dogs. We don't think the four-dog approach is going to work and we want to be able to demonstrate why. So could, we, we feel like you need to see that.
And, and yes, that is fine, but that three minutes will go towards your five minutes to address the commission.
Well, then, then maybe we shouldn't show it. But again, with all due respect, this is the first time today you've limited anyone in the three hours. You have, you have not told anyone they can no longer speak past X number of minutes.
I have told a number of people that they need to be limited to five minutes and we've limited, we haven't needed to stop anyone.
All right.
But again, Mr. Berryman, I, I think, I think this commission is very sensitive to your concerns.
Well, sure, I need to move forward then. So the big issues, of course, are barking. You saw that. And that goes on often during the day. It's very intense. But another big issue is the smell factor because those dogs, when they come out, they're territorial. They use the bathroom outside like dogs typically do. And so one of the proposals is, of course, to wash down the astroturf, which is, we have never seen that done in the whole two and a half years this has been going on. And so the, when it rains, of course, all that urine and feces that is still on the turf comes out on the Fifth Street. Then the wind blows and depending which direction it's blowing, it affects all 360-degree neighbors that are around this site. Because the parking lot, it's on slopes to the street and so naturally the water and so forth is going to flow to Fifth Street. It has taken us two and a half years to get a citation from the city for a zoning violation that's been going on since the place was built. So that brings up all the issue of enforceability. So I'm opposed to this measure, of course, and the suggestions that have been made by the planning commission. We bought that building 27 years ago when Oklahoma City was coming off the bombing because we believed in the future of the city. And it's just not a compatible use. There's noise. Our clients are bothered by it. It's very difficult to concentrate. Shortly after it opened, our tenant downstairs moved out. We have not been able to release the downstairs, which is 50% of our building in the last three years. I'm opposed to staff's recommendation for the four dogs outside because obviously two dogs are enough to cause a problem. One dog barking at a handler just incessantly is a problem. It won't do anything about the smell. Four dogs all day long won't do anything about the smell. We're still going to have that problem. I disagree with, with the applicant in the sense that if you take dog, if, if you can, if you can have 40 dogs and you take them out four at a time, that's 10 groups. If you take them out 30 minutes per time twice a day, you can fit all that into a 10-hour day. And so the, the notion that four dogs and only get to go outside five minutes, the math is wrong on that. So the big, a big deal for us too is that this is just unenforceable. It's going to cause the same kind of nightmare that we've had and for the city if this is passed because there's going to be continued barking with four dogs. That's going to set the stage where we're calling the city over and over again, as we did over a two and a half year period, and them not being able to enforce it. Even if you wash down the turf, which is 7,000 square feet and you put a 1/32 of an inch of wash on it every day, it's 125 gallons of detergent or disinfectant being dumped on the Fifth Street on a daily basis. That's not practical. There's been talk that, that somehow the rug was pulled out from under, from the applicant. There's a lot more there factually than has been discussed. This is a blow-up of the drawing that was submitted with a building permit. I am a general contractor. I've purchased buildings, permits from the city for 40 years. It's important when you submit for a building permit that the drawing that's attached to the application shows what you're going to do. This doesn't show any sort of an outdoor facility. The city, in my opinion, did not make a mistake because this is what they looked at when they approved that building permit in the first place. And you will also see here that the four exits that now go out into the dog area are marked exit to public way. And for those of you that may be architects or knowledgeable about the building code, there is a definition for public way and that's part of the egress, ingress as a fire exit. And it's supposed to be to a public way, not to a dog enclosure. So in that sense, they are contradicting the, the, the building code presently. And it also shows from this aerial that there's no dog park shown. And it shows that fire trucks can get to that building on three sides. And that's not true. It can't get to that building on three sides. So that's in contravention of what was approved by the fire department. So if you get into what actually happened, the building permit, as Mr. Box says, was issued. But the applicant said in her own voice on a recorded Zoom three years ago, when the spud was up for DDRC approval three years ago, she told the DDRC that three days after she had started construction, she found out that there was a problem. But she didn't stop. She rolled the dice and went forward with trying to get a spud constructing the entire time for five more months, only to pull down the spud at the last minute when she found out there was going to be so much opposition to it, put the fence up seven days later after the spud was taken down on the exterior that was never shown to anyone, and opened with a C O in October of that same year. with a CO in October of that same year. The only document that shows that zoning code is the one they have in hand. The building permit that was issued, that's on the system now, shows that you're not supposed to have an outdoor facility. The certificate of occupancy shows you're not supposed to have an outdoor facility. And this is much like if someone pulls out in front of you in your car, and you think you're going to hit them, you have an obligation to mitigate your damages and to slow down and try to avoid it. It's our opinion that she should have stopped after three days and gone down to the city like a reasonable, prudent person would have done, and said, "Folks, we got a problem here. What are we going to do to solve it?" Instead, she just went forward with this whole thing as if there was not going to be a problem. And so, that's, that's a big reason that we're in this mess today.
Mr. Berryman, you are out of time, and I did give you a little bit more time, but could you?
All right, I'll just wrap it up with one thing. We are, I am against what's been suggested. The, the suggestion from the planning commission and, and the TE that's been put in are not going to fix the smell. None of that deals with the smell whatsoever. It's not going to deal with dumping detergent or, or disinfectant on the Fifth Street. It will not fix the barking problem. And it is not enforceable. It's just going to cause a nightmare, and it's going to cause us to go around and around as citizens for two more years, trying to get enforcement on this four-dog issue. And it's, it's, we feel like it's also not practical to say that you can have four dogs out there, and that you're going to try to reinforce positive behavior and stop them from barking, and take them back in the building if they bark. That's just not practical. So we, we are urging you to vote against it, and I'll yell the floor to someone else.
Thank you, Mr. Berryman. Next, we have Josh Mills.
Mr. Chairman, I feel compelled to say that this recitation of facts of the case, which is, we are not in a position to explore or judge, is exactly why I think that we are not in a position to resolve this issue. And we're here to talk about the land use, what happened when, and whose fault it was, and who did what, is really not part of my, I'll speak for myself, consideration about whether this is an appropriate use for this piece of property, which is what it is. I think we're here to decide.
And you're right, and I apologize. Well, I needed to make sure I steered this conversation, had framed the issue first, to understand why we're here. I also think that Mr. Berryman very articulately, was very articulate in outlining the zoning issues, the appropriateness issues, though. So we have heard about the issues with smell, the barking, and a little bit of history about the past. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Mills, on, on that as well?
Yeah, my name is Paul Pendley.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That's okay. I'm Vice President of Dow Properties. I've worked in this area downtown for, going on 20 years. And I'd just like to start with some points Mr. Box made. He intimated that there's multiple facilities around here that are doing similar uses in opposition to the zoning ordinance. Specifically, you mentioned Midtown Vets. I would just, I said this at the DDRRC meeting, this is not the same thing. Midtown Vets does share the same zoning. It is a different business. They provide different services, all of which are allowed under the current zoning ordinance. They do not offer a dog park. They give their dogs access to fresh air and sunshine by walking them, which is something the applicant could also do in her facility. And therefore, they did not need to apply for any variance, spud, or change of use for their business. Regarding the Ninth Street barking lot, you know, this illegal variance that was granted, let's go ahead and admit that it's illegal. But what is the process for the variance? We do a radius report. Everyone within the radius report is notified that there's going to be a change of use. Everyone's got an opportunity to protest or support that change of use at the appropriate venue, Board of Adjustment, I believe. The case was VOA, I don't, I've got it, but it doesn't matter. No one protested. The reason why no one protests is because there's warehouses around there, empty lots. The apartments, they weren't there. I think they may have pulled their permit, but they didn't even have an occupancy permit for those until 2016. The used variance was issued February of 2014. So no one had a problem with it. If they had done a spud, the same thing would have happened. There would have been a radius report. People would have had an opportunity to protest or support, and the same result would have happened. Now, like I said, I'd been there 20 years. I was there when there was nothing down there. We rehabbed buildings that no one wanted. There was prostitution and drug dealing, you know, people living on the street, broken windows, windows that were just chain-link fence. And we invested in that area, and over time, we had built an office complex, beautified the area, and contributed to the city. And while the conditions for commercial office space leasing are more difficult today than they were, say, five years ago, there are a lot of reasons for that. There's COVID, there's the change of how we do business in large offices, as well as other economic factors that we don't need to get into. So I've seen the ups and downs and sideways in my 20 years. However, in the past three years, as we have continued to argue this particular case, I've had potential tenants, current tenants, complain about the parking. I've tried to show them office space at 600 North Walker, 428, 430 Northwest Fifth, of which I am a manager. They ask about the barking. What's up with the barking? And I have to explain to them that I'm sorry, they are currently operating something that is not allowed, and the city hasn't rectified it yet. Now, going on three years of making that same excuse, not just to potential tenants that don't want to hear barking, but to my existing tenants, who I am trying to retain in these times, that excuse is wearing thin. And I pray that you guys find the guidance and the fairness to understand the impact, negative impact, that this is having to everyone in the area. Now, there is a majority of property owners behind you in opposition. It is a supermajority of private property owners. You know, COPTA isn't here representing the bus transfer station, the post office isn't here. They don't want to get involved with that. But we have to get involved with it, because we're there every day. And I deal with the impact every day. And I really appreciate your time, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi. Are you, are you?
In opposition, my name's Robert Robles, and I was the next-door neighbor to, I was at 411, 411 and a half, and 413, when this whole mess started. Now then, I will tell you that in late May and in early June, that my notes reflect that I spoke with Mrs. Blair when I first spotted, because there was an empty building at 415, and it had been for some months. And suddenly, she's up there with some workmen looking in, and as soon as something's going on, I'm on it, and I'll walk over. We introduced ourselves. She gave me her card. I still have it. I have it attached to my notes. And I also have it in my notes that I called the city when I was informed the plans to have a dog park, dog grooming, and dog boarding next door with the common wall with me. And I told her, "You can't do that. You can't have a kennel here." She says, "Well, yes, I can." And so, I said, "Okay." I called Ms. Griggs. Why did I call Ms. Griggs? I knew Ms. Griggs, because when I remodeled my office, my home and my warehouse, 7,500 square feet, at a cost of multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars, plus the purchase price, it was a big investment for me. And I started at the very beginning. I checked up where my zoning is. Downtown Business District, call Ms. Griggs, she's ahead of it. We got to be old pals. Reviewed my plans, my architect, talked to my architect, tell me all the things I need, and it was all done, one, two, three. Now then, so I knew and I was familiar with all of these zoning deals. You have to start with Ms. Griggs at the Downtown Design Commission. I asked her, "Did you check with the Downtown Design Commission?" "Well, no." "You have to." Obviously, she wasn't going to, so I called Ms. Griggs, and I said, "Did you, do you know anything about the dog park? Do you know anything about..." "Oh, no, no, no." I said, "They're going in." This was June 1st or 2nd of 2020, before any demolishing, before anything had happened. And I understand that Ms. Griggs turned the crank, turned the ship, and said, told Ms. Blair, "Hey, there's a problem. You can't do this." What did she do? She didn't slow down, she sped up. In June of 2020, she hired an attorney to file a spud. "Well, I'll just take care of this. I'll just change the zoning." We fought about this issue. I had objections, spud 1422, and the Design Commission said, "We are not going to recommend anything, because we don't have any say in use." She didn't change anything outside. She didn't change the architecture, and under 800.11, she can have dogs inside. You're stuck. Okay. Well, we still complained about it, and the Design Commission kicked it upstairs to the Planning Commission. Spud 1422 on the calendar for September 2020. Poof, it's gone. Some of the comments from the Design Committee membership said, "Oh, you live downtown, you just put up with the noise. You put up with the trash. You put up with all this, and guess what? You get to put up with barking dogs." We are not going to say it should not, anything negative about it. It just is now the Planning Commission's problem. So, with my tail between my legs, I, I hated it, but I was going to have to endure it. Bark, bark, bark through the walls. I was assured by Ms. Blair, "Oh, we're going to put all sorts of insulation on the walls. You won't hear a thing." Guess what? Yeah. I heard it upstairs. My bedroom was not on a common wall, because I'm on the second story. I had a 2,400-square-foot apartment up there, luxury digs, with an elevator, wonderful view of the city, and now I get to hear the chorus of these dogs coming up through her roof. I don't know, I never, I would call. I had my wife call and said, "Please control the dogs. Please keep them quiet. You promised you would." She can't. Her employees click. They learned about the hangup button. They were, they stopped hearing my calls. Now then, my wife said, "This is unbearable. This is intolerable. I'm leaving. If you want to go with me, good. If not, we got a problem." I sold my building. I put it up for sale. Somebody talks about personal loss. I had a fully paid-for building that I built. I had it just the way I wanted it. I was looking forward to staying there for the rest of my life. My church, St. Joseph's, was down the street. Hospital, St. Anthony's, was up the street. Everything, oh, courthouse, that's where I do business, down the street. All this whole area was my kingdom. Over. Now then, I am now a tenant at 2,000 North Classen. I moved away, sold my building. Loss? I had to list it for $1.2 million. People look at it and look away. Finally, Mr. Davis cut me a deal, and under the circumstances, I couldn't refuse it, so I took his offer. He's here. He's a successor in interest. He bought my place, and he thought, "Oh, obviously, there's an exaggeration. Yeah, there's some dogs over there. They'll, well, they'll calm down." Guess what? He's going to tell you all about it. Now then...
Mr. Robles, you are out of time. Do you have, you want to make a closing statement?
Yes. This has a photograph that wasn't mentioned as part of the application process, and it says, "Parking Lot, Overhead Picture of Cars in the Parking Lot." Fine print. Access to Parking Lot. It does not say additional kennel. This is not a true statement of what you submit to the city to get your permit.
Thank you, Mr. Robles. Well, I have Josh Mills, and I have Susan Dever. So I think you all like to choose your order of who goes, so have you selected who's next?
David Moss, you're the chairman.
I don't have a David Moss signed up to speak.
My name is Linda Crumley.
Oh, okay. Are you Susan Dever or Josh Mills?
No, I'm Linda Crumley.
You're, I'm sorry?
Linda Crumley.
Are you on behalf of these two people?
No.
David Moss.
On behalf of David Moss.
Neither of which is, he's not signed up to speak. And so, our rules are required that you have to be signed up.
I'm representing, I'm representing him.
He's not signed up to speak, ma'am.
He's not here.
Nor is he signed up to speak. Did I miss him?
I did.
Maybe I did. Okay, maybe I'm missing some people. Let me check. Am I?
I didn't realize I had to sign his name.
Just go ahead. It's okay. We'll work on it.
My name is Linda Crumley. I am here today to represent David Moss, who owns the property at 424 Northwest Sixth and 440 Northwest Sixth. Directly behind the dog park, approximately 12 to 15 feet across the alley to the north, the building at 424 Northwest Sixth is an apartment building. We provide housing for tenants that work day labor jobs. Our opportunity, I'm sorry, our occupancy is approximately 20% due in part to the continuous dark barking of the dogs. The tenants that were day sleepers had to move. Therefore, we ask that you do not approve their application, and that they relocate the dogs to a better suited area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question before we go on with this. I want to be sure I understand. We were provided a copy of the DDRRC staff report. Several people have commented that it, that they recommended denial of this. I don't read it that way. Is there somebody here who can speak to that issue? That would be you.
Laura Griggs, Planning Department. I'm staff for DDRRC. The staff report, my staff report did not recommend denial, but the vote by DDRRC was, I'm sorry, I'm digging, I'm digging in my notes for the exact wording that I wanted to provide to you. Was by a vote of five to zero, they voted to recommend denial of spud 01535, with the comment that there are existing non-conforming features at the site, specifically the fence and artificial turf installation. DDRRC also recommended that the Planning Commission watch the meeting. This is, this came from, in 2020, you heard the same recommendation, that they recommended you watch the meeting or listen to the meeting, to hear to the discussion, because there were so many people that came to talk.
Okay.
Okay.
We do have a number of people signed up to speak. I would ask, in light of, and I appreciate that you all have waited a very long time. I believe, commissioners, are there questions at this point with what we have heard so Direction as far as, because, and I'll just be very candid, and I do want to hear the applicant's thoughts. I haven't heard anything from the, the opposition that I... I haven't heard anything from the opposition that I disagree with in terms of my concerns about the appropriateness of this development in this space. This use, in my opinion, is completely and totally inappropriate. All of the evidence that we've heard so far enforces that opinion, in my opinion. And so I don't, are we, I'm wondering, in light of, we've got 10, 12 more people left to hear from, which we're happy to hear from them, but I think they're here because they are here for an outcome. And it seems to me that there is consensus about that outcome among this commission. So I just want to, I mean, where are we right now? I mean, we can go ahead and hear from all 12, but if.
And is there new ground to cover?
Right. Where are we? Can anybody with?
I mean, I listened to the DDRC meeting last night and so I know what's going to be said already, so.
What's your view of this application?
Again, the discussion was a lot about what can already happen in the property next door, right? Not the parking lot, but inside the facility. What they're doing in there, they're zoned for, they can do it. What they can't do is what's in the parking lot next door. And I'm in agreement with the land use does not fit the parking lot next door. But that being said, they could walk the dogs up and down Fifth Street all day long and they would bark and do whatever they were doing in there. So are you getting something better than what you have with them behind that fence and protected? I don't know.
Well, I would also, I mean, that was something I would like to discuss.
I walked it this morning, I walked it two weeks ago, I walked it a month ago. I didn't smell anything out of the ordinary. I'm telling you, there's a lot more smells down there than those dogs. The barking, this morning, there was only one dog out there, so there wasn't any barking, but I'd heard barking before. And again, the buses are as loud as the barking, the backup alarms, excuse me, so, you know, we say this a lot, but be careful what you ask for, right? It could be worse, so again, I don't know.
Other thoughts, commissioners?
Say what you're going to say.
I've been by, I've heard the barking on a couple of occasions. I don't think any of us are debating whether, you know, that there is barking and that there is nuisance. So I mean, no matter how many minutes of video we watch, I don't think we're debating And I also wanted to express just, you know, sympathies with the applicant who's in a very tough situation and back to the original point that you made, Mr. Chairman. But no one is saying that you can't operate this business, that you can't do exactly what you're doing, your grooming and boarding and doggy daycare inside the building. Wherever we end up on this, I hope that there's consideration for alternatives here, you know, because these, the TEs do not seem practical or enforceable, even if we were to get to a place where so many mitigating measures would be, would make everyone feel better. I mean, if you're talking four dogs at a time and always handlers present and, you know, limited hours and rotations, I mean, can you just take them to a nearby dog park and, you know, or walk them around the block? At least you're spreading it around a bit and it's not focused in one area bouncing off the wall. So I'm hoping that there's some reasonable ways that this business can continue to function and be successful because I know it's needed, it's in a good location for downtown workers and residents, but it's just not compatible on that site, in my view.
So we do have people signed up to speak. I think you've, you can see from this commission that we are in, don't let me speak for anyone. I think there's consensus in opposition to this application. So in light of that, do we, do we have anyone else that has signed up to speak who has not spoken yet, who would still like to be heard, who has something new to add that we have not currently heard? Okay. To the applicant.
So we're fine.
Oh, wait, do we have someone? I'm sorry. Please, go ahead.
My name is Rick Dell. I'm the president of Dell Properties. Our company has two corporations that own property, one adjacent to the subject and one that's catagored to it. I would say this, the question here is not whether dog parks are a good idea, whether airports are a good idea, or whether junkyards are a good idea, all of these things are needed. The question is where you put them. There's a benefit to having a business, or somebody wouldn't want to start the business. But there's, sometimes there are positive externalities to a business and sometimes there are negative externalities, as economists call them. In other words, if you have a vacant house next to you that's falling apart and your next door neighbor builds, improves the house, repaints it, makes it better, not only will he make money, but he raises the value of your property. What we have here is a case where the person is creating an enormous negative externality. In other words, they could look at what is the cost of providing the service to people, the dog park, and then that has a cost in addition to the people of, they have to charge people in terms of taking care of the dogs. Just like, for example, you could say, does an oil refinery just have the cost of refining oil? No, you've got to consider the smells that it puts in the rest of the community and that's a cost it puts on the rest of it, or just like greenhouse gas, or you could go on and on. So the question is, what is, and this is why it's so important I get to the point here, what is the amount of damage we're talking here to the neighbors? Let's put a number on it. I was a professor of economics for 20 years, I've had tenure at four universities. And this is the kind of thing that is easy to figure out. Okay, first of all, you have seven property owners adjacent to this thing within the 300 foot limit. You can look at the appraised value by our county of what those seven properties were. These are the people in opposition. It's appraised by the county at $20 million. These are the people that are here protesting. So we've got $20 million worth of property. Now, what's the external damage to that property? If it's 1%, that's $200,000. If it's 10%, it's $2 million. If it's 30%, it's $6 million. And I would say, from what you've heard, if you had time to hear the rest of these folks, 30% is not at all out of the question. So we're talking an external cost of that business at $6 million. Now, what is the cost of them remediating the situation? Okay, I'm also a general contractor. They could, they could have enlarged the building they have, taken out a permit to do that, and since they're going to be housing dogs, not people, I would estimate it would cost about $50,000. Okay, that's one solution, that's the most expensive solution. The other solution is just haul the dogs to a park, to a parking area, to a place where there's a legitimate dog park, let them romp around and bring them back. That would cost far less. So there's a way this problem could be mitigated by these people. Now, I think, I think that if you want to get yourself in the weeds of what's legal and what isn't, I mean, I was on the Urban Design Commission for eight years. Our job wasn't to consider legal problems. I mean, for example, if the city made a mistake in the way they issued this permit, which is debatable, I think, that's, that's an issue that's not really, your issue really here is to decide, is this an appropriate use to put in that location? That's really all you need to decide. And I just don't think there's been any evidence that are all presented by the applicant that shows that this is an appropriate use in this particular spot. For example, I could, I could think as a real estate person, of 20 places they could have put this thing that wouldn't have had anywhere nearer the negative externality this has had. But instead, the owner of this property, rather than improving it after he bought it about three years ago, decided to take the easy way out and spend nothing and put a use in there that was clearly going to create an enormous negative externality to the people in the area. And I think that is deplorable behavior, frankly. So I urge you to give us relief from this problem. And certainly, I hope you don't add to the problem by approving this thing. Thank you.
Hello. Hi, I'll keep it short and sweet. My name is Darrell Davis. I'm at 411, 411 and a half and 413 Northwest 5th. And I'm the, probably the newest property owner in that area. I do join the dog park. I've owned that building for about a year and a half. I bought it from Mr. Robles. I'm excited to be downtown, but not quite as excited as I used to be. We were looking for a place for my family to have a secondary residence, the rooftop apartment was awesome. Outdoor patio space, but we also bought it as an investment. And I've got the warehouse and an office space there. And I've not been able to put any tenants in that, that building, due primarily to the barking. It's just, you know, we've, we're not downtown as much anymore. We're, we've had to install noise control inside the apartment because of the constant barking. And I would just, you know, I'm not going to stand up here for a long time and say anything different than you've already heard, but, you know, the Downtown Business District was very attractive to us, you know, it's supposed to create economic growth and it's not doing that, it's actually deterring in that, that area because of what's going on at the, at the doghouse there. Mr. Robles, he sold out, that was going to be his lifelong home. He pulled a very successful law firm out of the Downtown Business District and moved it away. And again, I can't get tenants in there because, and you've heard from numerous other property owners that they're having trouble bringing in additional revenues to the area. So I would, would ask that you guys just follow the use and really ask you to vote no. I'm a, I'm a dog lover and, you know, this isn't about advocating for dogs. It's about what is the use for that location and right now, it's being operated and used illegally. So, thank you.
I've got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You called me and spoke to me yesterday.
Yes, sir.
You have the building that shares the wall and the upstairs adjacent to it, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if it's a no vote, she has the right to remain there and it doesn't change anything about your environment, correct?
Well, it will, it will, if we get a no vote, it will absolutely curb the outdoor noise tremendously.
Okay. I understand how it affects everyone else in this area, except for you, because you are the neighbor.
Yeah, I will still, I will still hear the barking.
Thank you. Anyone else that's signed up to speak that has not spoken? With new information to add, please.
My name is Michelle Owen. I'm the director of Forever Years Dog Rescue. And number one, everyone who sounds like this is all the dog park's fault. I've been down there, that place is trash. There is litter everywhere, there are homeless people sleeping on the streets, there's the bus station going on where they're screaming and yelling and lauding, but they're not going after the bus station. I mean, I'm just saying, it's not all their fault that these people can't get tenants and I don't think that's fair to Sherry to put that all on her, that they can't get tenants down there. It's nasty down there. It has nothing to do necessarily with the barking. And also, it's one of the least barking places that we send our dogs. We send our dogs to Sherry because we don't have a facility for these homeless dogs that we get from the animal shelter. We send them to Sherry for socialization. And when I'm there, that place is clean. We wouldn't send our dogs there if it was a nasty, stinky, trashy place. We just wouldn't. They keep it clean, they keep the dogs as quiet as they can, but when you have dogs, they're going to bark. It's also during the daytime hours. These dogs go in at night, so they're not barking at night. If they're hearing dogs, it's not the dogs there. My point is, is this isn't going to solve anything for these people, a lot of it. Maybe it will keep the dogs quieter, but they're going to have to be walked. So if me and my crew have to go down there and walk the dogs all around the neighborhood, you know, then I guess that's what we'll do, but then they'll be right in their faces barking, or they'll be walking by while they're barking. We'll try to keep them quiet. But my point is, don't put this, I just don't appreciate them putting this all on Sherry, that it's because of the dog. It's not. I don't go down there at night, not because there's dogs in there, but I don't go down there at night because I'm scared for my life. That's why I don't go down to that area at night. So if anything, it's bringing people down there that normally wouldn't go down there because they're bringing their dogs there during the day for daycare. That's all I want to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else who has signed up to speak?
All right. This is Joshua Mills, finally.
I've been calling on you.
I know, I know, I know. We had an order over here, so I am here on behalf of Miller Johnson Jones, Antone East and White. I'm here on behalf of them. They could not make it, but it's the law firm that is located on the northwest corner of 6th and Walker. It's a big white building. I'm sorry?
Southwest corner of 6th and Walker.
Southwest corner. Thank you for the correction. I am here specifically, one, I can read the room. As part of my job as a lawyer, I can, I can read the room. I think I know where everyone's going, but I did just want to put out there that despite anything, you can hear this dog, the dog barking all the way over where offices are. And, and that is some projection, projecting through the city, through the concrete, and it affects the fact that during a deposition that I'm trying to take, you can hear the dogs on the third floor through the window. And the thing is, is if there is an illegal use going on, that illegal use should not affect the legal use of our property premises and our legal businesses that are going on. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. If there aren't any others, does the applicant have any? Thank you. Looking for a motion, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to deny spud 1535.
Commissioner Goveen has moved to recommend denial of spud 1535 to City Council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Commissioners, it's important to remember that a yes vote is a yes to deny it. So just to be clear. I know that's, that can be very confusing. Thank you. And it's important for our neighbors to also remember, in six weeks, it will still go to City Council for consideration. So the process is not over yet.
Take no pleasure in it.
That brings us, thankfully, to the end of our agenda, to the end of our separate items requiring separate vote. We're now in line for additional items. There aren't any communications or reports, any reports from Planning Commission committees, Planning Commission members. Commissioner Claire.
Nothing from me.
Commissioner Powers.
I have no idea. It's just like, you know, scrambled, so we'll have to wait till next time.
Yep. Commissioner Meek. Commissioner Privet.
I'm good.
Commissioner Newman.
I'm good.
Commissioner Goveen.
Good.
Commissioner Noble.
Nothing.
Nothing from me, Planning Department? Municipal councils? Citizens to be heard. Seeing that we've reached the end of our agenda, we are now adjourned.